Let's have the briefing on the homeless initiatives. And colleagues, I'll remind you, I've asked the manager to put this as a regular item on all of our work sessions going forward, so that we're going to get a regular briefing on this and where we are. I guess that has it like every two weeks. We also discussed how the staff might be able to report back to the community on a weekly basis as well. Maybe on the off weeks it could be just a short memo, providing an update, but I think that that would be helpful, too.
Presentation is loaded. Mayor and Council Rodney Gonzalez, Assistant City Manager for Economic Opportunities and Affordability. Before we get into the presentation, I just wanted to frame some recent initiatives, events, and updates that have gotten us, of course, through today. You may recall that on October 14th, the staff had released an update to Mayor and Council regarding homelessness initiatives up to that point. And most importantly, we had delineated a working group of different departments broken out into five key priority areas of cleanup and storage, public safety, housing, homelessness, services and delivery, and communications. And most importantly, we had assigned priority area leads to each of those areas and each of those individuals who are here today. Important is that we are continuing to meet on a routine basis to discuss all matters regarding homelessness, to talk about our strategies, to talk about implementation, talk about new things that we can be doing, and most importantly, collaborating on the efforts that we are all making towards the city's number one priority initiative. On October 15th, the priority area leads were here at council work session to provide various updates to council. It was about a three-hour work session, a lot of good information that was shared not only with the council but with the public. And on October 17th, council approved some changes to the camping line sitting ordinances. As a follow-up, yesterday, October 28th, in accordance with the council ordinance, staff performed outreach to individuals around the arch, namely within the boundary that was prescribed in the ordinance, which is 11th Street to the north, 4th Street to the south, 35th or 35 to the east, and Brazos to the west. Today is a follow-up commitment to our previous discussion with council. We are here today with ECHO and with our Homeless Strategy Office to provide an overview to council. ECHO, namely Matt Malika, the Executive Director, is going to provide just an overview of the endorsed action plan, the strategies that are related to the homeless response system, what it is, how it's working, what's on the horizon. Lori Pampillo-Harris, our Homeless Strategy Officer, is going to provide council some information on the Guided Path Pilot Project, which we believe is a very good project underway, as well as an encampment strategy that we have planned, and recommendations of various things that we plan to do before the end of the year. Following questions and answers regarding the presentation, Vella Carmen will provide just a quick overview of the outreach that was performed yesterday. And then, once again, we have each of our priority area leads here for any questions that council may have of them. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt Malika, Executive Director for ECHO.
Good morning. Thanks for having me here. So council adopted the ECHO action plan, and the system components are up on the screen now, involve outreach and shelter, housing and support services, addressing disparities, effective system response, and community commitment. And I think it's important to recognize that these, all of these elements, will work to address ending homelessness in Austin here if they're done together and if they're resourced effectively. So, very quickly, just want to provide an overview of the ECHO leadership organizational chart, just to give you a sense of the lines of business that ECHO is involved in and how we support the homeless response system here in Austin. So, we've done some reorganizing at the top to make sure that we've been able to highlight some of the data-driven response that we need here in Austin as a community when addressing homelessness. So we have added the Vice President of Quality Assurance, process of hiring for that position to oversee our homeless management information system and our research and evaluation departments at ECHO. And then we also, you know, see us, you know, tying back to the action plan, a strong need for the strategic planning and partnership aspect of the work as this is a community-wide response and not a response that's just reflective of one organization. And so that sort of put an emphasis on that position to be able to do some outreach to the community members, not that we think should be part of our homeless response system that might not currently be, and to continue to engage all the great organizations that have been at the table and continue to lead the homeless response system here in Austin Travis County. So, a quick overview of those departments and how they coordinate with the action plan and areas of coordination. And so, as you can imagine, as an organization, everyone's touching pieces of the action plan in all the five phases, but I wanted to call out more specifically where those areas of focus are within the various departments. So our continuum of care and community partnerships, as you can see, really focused on, and I'll go into more detail on those specific departments later in the presentation, but very focused on system effectiveness and addressing disparities. Our coordinated entry system is, has a pretty significant housing and support services component from a referral perspective and outreach and shelter. Community housing is the housing and support services piece of the action plan is their main area of focus. Our HMIS system looks at system effectiveness overall. So, the, all the data that's going into our homeless management information system is being spit out into our research and evaluation department to take a look at and compare that to outcomes and best practices across the country. And as you can see, the research and evaluation piece really takes a look at all five pillars of the action plan. And I think is probably, some of the work that's being done there is really important to understand the scope of the resources needed to end homelessness here in Austin. Just at the bottom there, you can see we're about to start, hopefully here in the next month or two, the Pay for Success Project. That project is not a standalone department. It will be, it will be integrated into the various departments here, and we're pushing, hopefully, to start that project in the next, before the New Year. So I want to talk a little bit about ECHO's role. Oh, and quickly, just some data points to hit on for the homeless response system. Since August 19th to present today, 223 households have had their homelessness experience resolved via rapid rehousing and permanent supportive housing. Also, since August 19th to present, 216 households were able to resolve their homeless situation through other routes, and that's either through diversion or self-resolution with help from case management and the support services they get in the community. So, that, that's a good indication of the scope of the work being performed currently, and also to mention the great work being done by the service provider community here in Austin. ECHO obviously didn't house any of those folks or provide them services on our own, and so it's very important that, that integrated approach that we'll talk about as we go through the presentation.
What was the number and the time period?
Sure. So from August 19th to present, 223 households via either rapid rehousing or permanent supportive housing. And so those two, that's a housing intervention provided through the continuum of care funds. Also, from August 19th to today, 216 households via other routes that aren't, that weren't bringing them into our homeless response system. So you look at diversion or self-resolution through help with their case manager, just the support services they were able to get via the coordinated assessment, and then some light touch after that, where they were able to resolve their homeless situation. So just a quick overview now of ECHO's role as a COC lead agency and what that means, what it means to be the collaborative applicant for continuum of care funds. So COC is continuum of care, and ECHO has been designated the lead agency and the collaborative applicant, which means that we are responsible for coordinating the federal application for dollars that come into Austin and Travis County. We do that with our service partners. We have various stakeholders that receive funding, different types of funding through our COC, and they're, they all complete applications at the end of the time, at the end of the year, and then ECHO evaluates and scores those applications and creates what's called a consolidated application back to HUD. So HUD's tasked COCs and actually mandates the continuum of care lead agencies to promote community-wide commitment to the goal of ending homelessness. So the idea is that it's larger than just the federal dollars, and the service providers coordinating the federal funds provide funding efforts for nonprofit providers and state and local governments to quickly rehouse homeless people so that people experiencing homelessness are not lagging in the system for extended periods of time. And promoting access and utilization of mainstream programs, essentially what we're looking at is making sure we right-size the right type of housing intervention to the person experiencing homelessness or the household experiencing homelessness. And we're tasked with ensuring that, to the best of our ability, we can get people into the right intervention to help resolve their homelessness situation. So we have, we have what's called, ECHO is governed through our COC lead agency moniker by a membership council. They are considered the COC board, and they're, they help prepare and coordinate and score the collaborative applications that come in, or the separate applications, I apologize. And ECHO is responsible for creating the collaborative application. We're also responsible for evaluating the outcomes of the awarded programs through our research and evaluation component. We do that in various ways, all sort of using, using the HUD metrics that change, that can change year to year. For fiscal year 2018, to give you an idea of the scope of the work, the COC was awarded $6.8 million for Austin Travis County. We also received funding for the youth homelessness demonstration program, and if you know who that is, the YHDP funds. So they've been added to the 2019 COC funding to increase the funding to $10.5 million, and that is a request that's in, we have yet to be awarded. We should find out our total award sometime in January or February, we believe. So our responsibility as the COC lead agency, so the continuum of care lead agency responsibilities include compliance to HUD regs and fiscal compliance to the regulations set out by HUD in terms of eligible expenses and program standards. The, we're also designated to carry out the planning and system operation activities. So the coordinated entry system, the setup, the prioritization, those are all done in conjunction, of course, with our service, the service provider community here in Austin Travis County, but ECHO is responsible for a governance charter related to that work. We're also responsible for coordinating a local competition, which is called the NOFA, the Notice of Funding Availability Competition, and those funds are granted to providers in our community. Providers can apply for funds for what's considered, what's called a bonus project outside of the current allocation, and we can go into that, I'd be happy to answer questions about that later on. We manage the annual HUD application, help to coordinate other funding opportunities, and we do, like I said, project and system monitoring, monitoring of our COC federal dollars. We coordinate the point in time count, and it's mandated that we consult with our emergency solutions grant recipients. And so those funds are funneled through the state to the cities and county, cities and county. We are mandated to establish a coordinated entry system, which we've done, and develop written standards for various housing types like rapid rehousing and permanent supportive housing. So just a quickly, quick overview of the various departments at ECHO. So our continuum of care COC partnerships department manages the NOFA and interfaces with the membership council, which was mentioned before. And so they, they're charged with completing the collaborative application every year, which is about a four-month process from start to finish, and working with our community partners on establishing standards, the rapid rehousing and permanent supportive housing standards that were mentioned before. So that programs are run similarly across, if you're funding a rapid rehousing program, you have a good idea about what you'll get for that money and that funding, and we have a good idea about what the outcomes are associated with that work. And if you're going to fund, or there's permanent supportive housing happening in your community, that those programs are standardized, and you have a good idea about the outcomes associated with that work per financial dollar committed to that, to that service type. There, right now, that department has been focused on trying to, really, that, that area of focus will be the collaboration with the action plan. We'll come out of that department in terms of how to facilitate the city funds, helping to line up with the federal dollars that might line up with any state funds or county funds that come in to people experiencing homelessness and to the work that's happening on, on that front. Right now, currently, it's operating, we have a great, you know, wonderful program director and staff there that do a great job of setting out standards and creating standards for the, for the projects, and we're working, I think we have some build-out to do around our ability to monitor and to continue to improve upon best practices in the various program types. Our coordinated entry system is a robust coordinated entry system. You've seen its ability to be dynamic in real time with the pilot that's happening right now, and our ability to create a by-name list for that pilot, manage that list, and help sort of cross-check those folks that are experiencing homelessness outside of the arch with our coordinated entry system, see who's in, who has a resource attached, who might have a case management attached already, and be able to work off that list to help those people resolve their homeless situation with the service providers. Our coordinated entry system is, come from several, doing this work in several different communities. Our system is really well-established, very well-thought-out, and runs exceptionally well. Right now, I think the issue is, you know, we have 5,000, 5,000 to 7,000 people on that list, so it's really a resource issue right now in terms of being able to get people off the street through that list and through the homeless response system here. And just as, you know, anecdotally, I think it's important to acknowledge that the coordinated entry system was set up by HUD because of, you know, their recognition that there are scarce resources in these communities, so there was a need to create a coordinated process by which folks access those resources. And I think that that, that piece is important to recognize, that there was an expected list to happen, and I think that communities that are doing this really well attack that list in different ways and can resource that list in different ways. And the hope here is that we continue to refine our coordinated entry process here in Austin, and we continue to look to improve based on some best practices we've seen, and we continue to resource it effectively and bring in more resources that aren't mandated to use that coordinated entry system so that we can leverage the work we've done to create a coordinated system and the efficiencies around that in order to reduce some perceived, I think, waste in the community around duplicative processes. So our community housing partnerships, this is a really important aspect of the work. This department interfaces with private property managers and landlords in the community to provide access to people experiencing homelessness through the housing or rental assistance dollars that come through our homeless response system. So they work closely with private property managers on eligibility criteria, so helping to relax tenant selection criteria and background checks and other things that can be barriers to our folks accessing some of the units in the community. They work closely with the private property managers to ensure that rents are paid on time from the, you know, the rental assistance is paid on time, the tenant portion of rent's paid on time. They liaison with our supportive service community and providers, case managers, clinicians, in order to make sure that the tenant understands the lease, the occupancy requirements of the, of the unit, and helps to mitigate any potential issues that come up in the, in the apartment units. This is, one of the things that's happening here in Austin is that we have a lead agency that's taken on some of this work. We don't do all of the landlord outreach and engagement for the folks experiencing homelessness in this community, and one of the things that you've seen nationally start to happen is that that work starts to consolidate with one organization or one or two organizations because the idea that multiple organizations are reaching out to our community and explaining the programs in different ways is one of the, one of the things, it's not a particularly efficient use of the resource. And so I think one area, what's on the horizon when looking at this department, is to sort of determine what path we're going to head down as a community in terms of standardizing that, that work. So our homeless management information system, or HMIS, is a requirement to receive HUD funds, to have an HMIS set up. Our HMIS system is also one of the, one of the best that I've seen in the country. It does a great job of being, being able to adapt and bring in different data points that are, that people are looking for, various service providers are looking for, or, you know, that, you know, that we've, with the pilot that we're doing outside of the arch, we were able to create a template within our HMIS system very quickly, within a day, that we were able to go in and electronically get the data points that the service providers were looking for in order to measure success and to give an idea about what the, who the people were that are experiencing homelessness outside of the arch. And so we were able to build that into a database, run reports off of that, run reports off of that template, and provide updates in, on very specific metrics that people were looking for as it relates to that geographic area. In the future, I think what we're looking for is, in our HMIS system, is to get more, more people involved in using HMIS as the primary platform for documenting on people experiencing homelessness in their, in their agencies. One of the, one of the things that many HMIS systems have struggled with is how to merge healthcare data with some of the housing and case management and clinical case management data that's happening outside of the hospital systems or outside of the clinics. Healthcare and criminal justice information is stored separately, obviously in separate databases for HIPAA reasons, but we're not pushing that data into HMIS the way I think we could, and we could do that a little more effectively so that the, you know, the hospitalist that's in front of someone at the emergency room can have access to HMIS, see that this person might be connected to a case manager with Caritas or Integral Care, and be able to appropriately create a discharge plan that's more focused and helpful to the person experiencing homelessness rather than not having access and not understanding all the supports that that person may or may not be connected to. So we're working on that with our HMIS provider on how we can merge some of the electronic health record information with our HMIS system information. For our research and evaluation department, right now, mainly, the main database that, that they're working out of is HMIS, and they're taking, they're pulling reports out of HMIS and, you know, evaluating effectiveness of programs. So if you have two separate rapid rehousing programs, for instance, set up in HMIS, we can pull reports based on each program and then look at whether or not the case management to client ratios are the same or different. So if one program has a 30-to-1 ratio, one program has a 21 ratio, how does that change, impact the, the ability to serve that, the people in that program? Are the outcomes the same or different? Does it, is that program benefiting by enrolling more folks? Are we reaching more people, or are we providing a less effective service to 30 folks and not helping to resolve their homeless situation? Would, is, is a better number 25 or 20? And it's sort of looking at the projects, like, in a silo, and then looking at them more broadly across the system response to understand their effectiveness. In the future, I think the research and evaluation is going to be playing a major component and a large role in the Pay for Success Project that's about to start, and also in the merging of the data sets between the electronic health records and trying to work with the healthcare system, work with the criminal justice system more effectively to show that providing housing to folks experiencing homelessness in your institutional, in your various institutions is a more effective intervention than, you know, the continual cycling through those systems. And I think that's the main focus of the research and evaluation department in the next year or two. And I think that's my last slide.
We'll come back with questions for you.
Good morning. Lori Pampillo-Harris, Homeless Strategy Office. Today, we're going to be talking a little bit about the Guided Path Pilot Project, which is in week two and a half. Homeless encampments and homelessness is directly correlated to the lack of affordable housing across the country. Cities who are grappling with this issue have found that correlation and have begun to really invest in how we actually come to a conclusion when it comes to the unsheltered population. And so with that, the city of Austin is purposed in our efforts to manage those public spaces that would become inclusive public space for those who find themselves unsheltered and are public, so that we can also provide temporary crisis help and also provide a path to, for those people experiencing homelessness into housing while also being very mindful of the public use space that our city community members utilize. With that thinking around the Guided Path Pilot Project, this office, along with ECHO, Austin Public Health, the downtown Austin Community Court, Neighborhood Housing, Community Development, and APD, we all co-cavened the homeless provider community to design a strategy to address the encampments around the arch. And there were probably close to 30 providers that were a part of that original design, and they helped to create and craft what this, what this Guided Path Pilot Project looks like. So it was a community provider-driven process. The goals with the Guided Path Pilot was, and continues to be, to both reduce the health and safety risk for those that are living in encampments and to prevent homelessness through long-term solutions. What we have chosen to do was to utilize all the resources from current city contracts to be applied to this strategy. And what that provided me, since I'm yet to even reach my two-month anniversary mark here in this position, I know that there needed to be a very quick assessment of how our crisis response system is and how is it working. And so utilizing only our city contracts and bringing them together for this specific project, it gave me an opportunity to review and observe how those contracts are working in real time. So when we're thinking about a guided path or any type of encampment strategy and this being a project, this is completely, and we have to be very mindful, this is a pilot initiative. We're looking at what works, what doesn't work, what's successful, where we were unsuccessful, where there are barriers. And so this is a very put-together, designed project done in a very immediate and rapid pace. So we know that this pilot project, while it's small, is really trying to tackle a very complex issue made up of many years of complexities. So with this being a pilot, again, we're looking for not only what's working, what's not working, and what those barriers are, but at the same time, we're actually going to be able to provide critical assistance to those who are unsheltered outside of the arch. And that's a significant commitment that we received from the provider community and from the staff departments. So with the system component, components to end homelessness that city council has adopted and our community adopted, we utilize some of those components for this strategy. And that includes outreach and assessment. So there's three phases to this strategy: outreach and assessment, service engagement and referral, and then sustainment and accountability. Outreach and assessment, that phase has been concluded. That phase included having enumeration and mapping of individuals who were outside of the arch over a, I actually think it's a two-day period, and instead of a two-and-a-half day period. Additionally, we created a very short survey. If all, if you are familiar at all with anybody who's experiencing homelessness, there's something that we in the community do called a VI SPADA, a vulnerability index kind of survey. That survey is much lengthier, it's a longer conversation, you get more intimate with the person in terms of where their background is, where they were at, where they're headed. And we really wanted to make that assessment process outside the arch much faster, much quicker, so that we can capture the right information that quicker, so that we can capture the right information that we needed as quickly as possible. And so with the provider community, they helped to craft what that short survey and assessment looked like. That then created our by-name list for every individual who would be included in the Guided Path Project. So only those individuals who were surveyed over that two-day period are a part of the Guided Path Pilot Project. After that, after we concluded those surveys in that two-day period, we came back together and we validated that by-name list. Thanks to the coordination of Echo and utilizing HMIS, we then said, okay, this person has already touched the system, or this person might already have a case manager, and we just kind of validated all of the names to say, okay, these are the folks that we are actually going to make sure, whatever is necessary, however long it takes, those are the folks that we're going to make sure are going to get housed through this project. Individuals during that two-day period were immediately offered any open slots for emergency shelter. The current shelter providers were very generous and gracious and waived their policies that they currently have that would hinder those entrances. For instance, the arch was able to waive if somebody had to exit their facility due to some behavior issues or other issues that broke policy. They said that they would waive this so that that person can come inside. And the Salvation Army did the same thing. If somebody timed out past their 60 days, that person could come back in. Because I believe with the Salvation Army, they have a 60-day time limit, and then you can't return until another like 60 to 90 days. So they waived that policy for this pilot program. Additionally, we had navigation, so the pop-up navigation center that you guys have been hearing at, that was once at the Falk Library, was actually popped up inside of the arch for immediate case management and navigation to mainstream services, along with coordinated entry and kind of doing that longer VI SPADA for anybody that wasn't a part of the Guided Path Pilot first snapshot. The results for this first phase, 99 individuals were identified and surveyed. Initially last week, we reported 81, but there was a lag in the data entry. And as of yesterday, we know for sure that there were 99 that were surveyed and now are a part of the Guided Path Pilot Project. Thirteen of those individuals out of the 99, we have found out they were already in shelter, so they have been exited out of shelter for the day. So at a certain period of time, shelters say, okay, you know, we need a cleanup, you can return at a certain period of time. And so those folks then exited and just stayed outside of the arch waiting to be able to go back into shelter. Additionally, out of those 99 individuals, 22 people that were offered shelter that evening stayed there at the shelter at least one night after being engaged over that two-day The current phase that's currently underway is service engagement. We've been in this phase since last week and will be continuing through this week and until all 99 individuals have been resolved with their housing crisis. So at service engagement, what happens is pretty much we go through a by-name list and make immediate referrals to people who, one, are willing to accept, but even if they're not willing to accept, we say, we're going to match this person with appropriate resources based upon the snapshot that we took during that two-day period and also based upon the data that's in HMIS. We are also making available through the city contracts, and again, the generosity and the goodwill of the partners to make this a priority over their own priorities, I think is significant. So making those case management slots available, shelter bed slots available, diversion, and also really importantly is the referrals to substance abuse treatment slots and mental health treatment slots. That is a tremendous need in our community. I believe that Texas is ranked 49th or 50th when it comes to mental health funding. And so with that, at the intersection of the lack of affordable housing, that's where you're coming into what you see in the unsheltered population. And so as a result, as of yesterday, and I have one updated number for this morning, four people have been housed out of the 99. Two, it says one on your slide, but I just got an update this morning from Interval Care, two people have been reunited with their family and so no longer experiencing homelessness. Three people were accepted respite at 15th Street. And 74 of the 99 people who are surveyed are currently enrolled or pending enrollment into appropriate programs that lead them to permanent housing. We do have a gap as of right now. 24 people are not matched with programs for enrollment. As we continue to, again, kind of match people with resources, we find out, oh, so like yesterday when we were doing the by-name list, we found out we were dealing with an individual who had a chronicity around diabetes. He was over a certain age, but he was matched with a provider that wasn't with elder care. And so then we moved it over to an elder care resource. And so as we're kind of moving in and as case management and the navigators are talking with the individuals, they find out, okay, what are the actual resources and supportive services that you need to get you on a path to ending your housing crisis? And so that may change. So we may have assigned somebody to Caritas, we end up saying, okay, no, this person actually needs to go to DAC PSH through the arch. And so that's a constant movement. But as of right now, 24 are not matched with programs for enrollment. As of yesterday, there is a commitment by providers to see if they can open up any more additional slots. So as we're speaking today, they are meeting right now to go through that list and see what other additional slots for those 24 people that we might be able to open up. The next phase of the Guided Path Pilot Project, which is a critical one, is going to be built out in the next few weeks, and that has to do with sustainment and accountability. And so that means much more increased outreach activity, very thoughtful, very strategic in the times that outreach is out there, to continue to ask, how did you end up here? Why are you here outside of the arch? And what can we do to help you resolve your housing crisis? Increased police monitoring in any encampment strategy that has worked in other communities, having increased police activity, not to enforce, but rather to just be there as a support to those who are also, who are seeking shelter and also in support of the outreach is going to be important. And then the increased cleaning of the areas. And then what I would like to be able to do is also create a perceived impact assessment. So we will do pretty much like an informal assessment of the neighbors around the arch, individuals found outside the arch, the folks that are inside Salvation Army in the arch, and just kind of get a quick kind of informal viewpoint of what do you think has happened outside of the arch? Has this made a difference? And what difference to you has it made? And so that is going to be a part of that third phase for the pilot project. My initial assessment of the pilot, and a more thorough assessment will be done as the pilot continues and as we come to a conclusion of that second phase and into the third, is that, and this is anecdotal, but every individual that was engaged shared that they want housing or and services, but not everyone wanted emergency shelter. That was based upon our current unused and available shelter spots. I do know that the arch has been extremely generous with making additional space available, but at the same time, that space that we continue to offer those individuals are not being used. Based upon just this pilot, there seems to be an over-enrollment in rapid rehousing and a lack of permanent supportive housing slots. And what that says to me is communities who tend to not have enough permanent supportive housing because there's not available affordable housing units, along with case management slots, what they do is they take the most chronic person and say, okay, we don't have a PSH unit for you. So we're going to put you in a rapid rehousing. And rapid rehousing is only temporary, and it's very limited, and it does not have always the same intensive case management that someone with PSH needs. And so we're enrolling people in available rapid rehousing, and those folks are not always successful. And so they end up back into an unsheltered situation. And so what you'll, and again, without me looking at the data and having some really thoughtful conversations with that, that puts us in a lot of risk that our rapid rehousing programs are not being successful. But it is the right thing to do because if we don't have the permanent supportive housing available, leaving somebody with those deep needs leaves them vulnerable to die on the streets. And so we would rather use rapid rehousing because that's the only available resource that we have. And so we're going to put them in that, but that's not the appropriate resource. What I believe the system is hoping to do is that when PSH does become available, they'll roll people off of rapid rehousing into PSH. The challenge is, we still aren't getting the PSH in this community, which means that people are stuck in the rapid rehousing from those who actually need PSH. And then the folks who actually need rapid rehousing are now clogging up your system in the middle. And so when you see that, when someone says, oh, you know, I've been in coordinated entry for three to five years, and when you look at maybe their VI SPADA, they're not chronic, but they could become chronic because they've been waiting on the list so long, and that we're creating chronicity because we're not having the throughput, because we don't have the PSH for the right individuals, and then we are utilizing rapid rehousing for PSH, which means everybody else who needs rapid rehousing isn't getting it. And then additional to that is the lack of diversion, or not lack of diversion, a more robust diversion where people shouldn't be enrolled. There's a lot of folks who should not be enrolled in coordinated entry because there's ways that we can do diversion, which I appreciate APH, who recently did a training with our community providers this past week with NAEH, National Alliance to End Homelessness, around having, how to create a community-wide, system-wide diversion program. Matt, you know, you probably have a lot to say about what I just said.
I do, and I'll save some of it, but I just want to mention, you know, this is not a unique scenario. So the right sizing of resources to folk, people experiencing homelessness, this happens across the country in almost every community. There is not enough permanent supportive housing in any community that's fighting to end homelessness on behalf of the people experiencing homelessness in their community. There is one thing that's unique, I would say, about Austin's situation, and that is that we, outside of the building that Interval Care just built, 50 units of permanent supportive housing there with what's called project-based rental assistance at the terrace at Oak Springs from the Housing Authority of the City of Austin and with HUD-VASH vouchers, some veteran vouchers also. That's the only permanent supportive housing building in this community in central Texas. And so that's 50 units. And just to give you an idea of the scale, in Denver Metro, in just Denver alone, there were 3,000 units of site-based permanent supportive housing in just the city of Denver. So there is a gap in that model here that all our permanent supportive housing and the resources are tenant, what's called tenant-based rental assistance. We're relying on the private property management community to come to the table with units for us to be able to house our most vulnerable folks. And a lot of times, that partnership, while we're very appreciative of those partnerships, they exist and they are strong in many ways, we're relying on folks who aren't involved as heavily in that tenant's treatment or care coordination in order to stand up a very pivotal part of that person's, ending that person's homelessness, and that's providing the actual space. And so in permanent supportive housing units, like with the terrace at Oak Springs, which you'll see as that opens, you have a property management company and onsite services that are working in conjunction to keep people housed and to help folks not have to relocate. And we have a real gap in that model here in Austin as compared to other communities across the country.
Thanks for that, Matt. And again, that was just my assessment, just based upon us bringing the crisis response system just to this location. And so again, I'm only basing what I'm saying based upon the Guided Path Project and based upon some ancillary conversations and discussions I've had with the provider community and Echo. But I think a greater kind of dive into what the data actually says, it's important to have a system that's nimble, that can change resources based upon the data that the population exists within HMIS. So based upon that, the assessment is that, you know, of course, we said it already, that new PSH slots are going to be needed for us to really be successful in this project. So we're going to be thinking through a solution towards that. Also, my initial assessment, the inflow outside of the arch, that other systems are contributing to that. So one of the questions, well, let me give you an example. And so this was based upon a conversation from an individual who ended up at the arch. The story may not be all the way valid, and it's hard to make it valid, but that person was recently released from a hospital, still had bandages and ooze and pus coming out of his side, was very lethargic, and we brought him in immediately. And he was just discharged in the middle of the night after a gallbladder surgery. And he was discharged and put right outside the arch. Additionally, and you guys may have already known this, but this was new information as we were doing the snapshot, and I was having conversations with individuals outside of the arch, is that there's an Austin Transition Center where parolees from across the state must come to Austin to register. And then additionally, it's my understanding that they have to stay in Austin. So you're wondering where the inflow is coming from. The inflow is coming from many systems who say, here's the arch, come here and get help. And so a part of a system for other communities that are really trying to tackle this issue is something around prevention. And prevention is not really a crisis response system responsibility. Prevention is a responsibility community-wide, where we start addressing systems that influence the housing, the homeless crisis response system. And so that is health, that is corrections, that is other areas where we see the inflow coming into our community. And so I think that's a larger conversation that I think needs to be had. And I know internally at the city staff level, there's been some conversations around prevention and how do we start instigating those conversations? The will of the providers, again, to make this a priority outside of their usual services is being made, but continuous pressure to serve without resources may negate that goodwill. And what I mean by that is that, you know, we've asked folks who have separate board of directors, have separate strategies, have separate goals, and they had somebody next on their list of who they were going to serve and how they were going to serve them. And then through the Guided Path Pilot, we said, can we get ahead of you and instead you work with our 99 people outside? And so I think that says a lot about the provider community, who are willing to make our priority their priority. But at the same time, what we are doing is, it conflicts with the efforts of having a coordinated system that's community-wide to address not just what's happening outside the arch, but community-wide. And we want to make sure that as we're moving people into housing and receiving services, that we provide a more equitable way of doing that through that centralized intake system that Matt spoke about with coordinated entry system. So the Guided Path was kind of, and still is, kind of our litmus test of how we could potentially make this more of a strategy city-wide when it comes specifically to encampments. And so again, the housing affordability gap that is happening is widening, not just here, but nationally. And shelter for homeless and our lower-income residents is something that, again, most cities are beginning to grapple with, and some are finding some success, others are continuing to find barriers. I think that, and I've said this before, that any successful plan specific to encampments must include appropriate housing options so that the presence of encampments in the community can be resolved over time. Without there being an appropriate landing spot for individuals that are unsheltered, we're never going to come to see, to move a needle around the unsheltered population in the city of Austin. So again, the immediate housing units are keys to success. Motels is something that I have brought up before. I know that Matt has talked about motels, and the reason we talk about motels is because motels have already been talked about and are being utilized in other communities as an easy way to convert to affordable permanent supportive housing units because those infrastructures are already in place. When we're talking about PSH, we're talking about SROs. We don't need two- or three-bedroom units. We really need SROs, one-bedroom units, and motels can easily be converted to that. And so for that robust encampment strategy, any motel that would be purchased, or anything like a motel that would be purchased, would be initially used as bridge housing and then slowly converted to PSH. There are certain standards that HUD looks at for saying, okay, this to PSH. There are certain standards that HUD looks at for saying, "Okay, this is a unit, but then here is a PSH unit." And so, the motel's rooms may need to have some slight modifications to get to that criteria. So, until then, we can then call when we know that we're placing somebody in, from, into a motel, into bridge housing. And remember, bridge housing means you already have case management, and you already have a unit identified, you're just waiting to get to that unit. And so, anybody that we take from an encampment strategy, we would say, "Okay, we're going to put you into bridge housing," knowing that you're going to be converted into a PSH unit as we begin to slowly transition So, one of the cautions that I have, and again, as Matt said, communities are grappling with this issue of how do we resolve the gap of permanent supportive housing, and then how do we also resolve the ongoing needs of those who don't need permanent supportive housing. But then also, our list within coordinated entry, you talked about the seven or eight thousand, there is still a significant amount of individuals that are on there who need permanent supportive housing. And so, while we create this encampment strategy, which in our world, we call a side door, because it's not working within the system that was created, the coordinated entry system. If we create this encampment strategy, then we may be cannibalizing the resources of having all of a sudden 300 permanent supportive housing. So, then the priority will be just the unsheltered, while we've been waiting for people on our coordinated entry list, who may have been waiting for years to get that permanent supportive housing unit. So, we would need to discuss what that would look like if we decided to prioritize an encampment strategy. One of the things that we have been discussing is we do a one-for-one. So, if we house somebody through the encampment strategy, we also dedicate one resource to someone coming off the coordinated entry list, so that we could try to be as fair and equitable as possible in utilizing any rapid units that we make available through this potential encampment strategy. So, again, in less than two months in this position, I do have some recommendations. These are very preliminary. I think that as time goes on, you know, Matt and I both will probably have a more robust and clear path of some real clear strategies and how we can maximize the city's investments to leverage opportunities with the federal dollars that are coming in. But based upon just my immediate assessment of some of the things that I've been working on, and that the city staff has been working on, and council, is I would encourage us to formalize an interim agency working group, which that means that any departments that currently have contracts with homeless providers, that has said, "Okay, you must utilize HMIS." And from my understanding, most of our contracts have required for providers to utilize HMIS. It's important for that group to get together, and that would include APH, NHCD, DAC, my office, and EMS, for us to begin to meet monthly through the end of the year, to begin to review the program results and investments based upon the data that we find in HMIS. So, we can see what the outcomes are, if we're getting the outcomes that we're seeking, and if we're getting our money's worth. I think that's pretty much what you guys have been asking, is where is our money going, and are we getting what we expected in terms of the return on investment? And again, that standard that I would ask for that working group to have is to track and compare the outcomes achieved against the HUD COC performance standards. Because one of the things that's really important to acknowledge is that HUD does score higher, the COC application that Matt talked about, when local dollars are completely aligned with HUD dollars. They want, HUD wants us to maximize our dollars, and we want to maximize our dollars. So, HUD is saying, "Okay, let's get in line." And the way that you get in line, or align those two, is through the lead My second recommendation is to review and evaluate city investments to align with endorsed Austin's action plan. The city council approved a budget item to establish performance criteria. I am recommending that the city contract with an experienced national expert to review and evaluate city of Austin investments and homelessness, to assess those outcomes that match the intentions of the contracts across the board. So, that review will endeavor to identify ways to align city of Austin investments with not only the Echo Plan, but to maximize potential federal funding, and to maximize the outcomes that the city of Austin is seeking. The final report would be presented to council during the first quarter of 2020. And what we would ask this consultant to do is actually look at our total investments, look at every contract, see what the outcomes are. Are those outcomes actually leading to what we are seeking? And then, looking at the action plan that we have adopted and saying, "Okay, this contract leads to outreach and shelter, this contract leads to system effectiveness, this contract isn't doing anything." So, here's how I would repurpose, or how I would recommend repurposing it. Recommendation three, procure properties in order to implement a successful encampment strategy. This would include continued monitoring of city data on outcomes of health, safety, and sanitation needs of unsheltered populations. Our staff is already doing a fantastic job on monitoring that, but I just wanted to make sure that I said that out loud, that we will continue to do that as city staff. Additionally, the steadfast commitment for the city of Austin to continue to partner with Echo and other interested, experienced parties to identify potential properties that result in quickly building a pipeline of low-barrier, affordable units as quickly as possible. Additionally, I know that there was, I think, mayor and council members, that there was, during the veterans surge, you guys did a landlord recruitment campaign. I know that there is a landlord incentive program that currently exists at Echo, but I would recommend for there to be a campaign to recruit landlords, to get them into the landlord incentive program that would benefit the whole homeless response system, not just the encampment strategy. The encampment strategy would be one of the benefactors, but an entire campaign around why housing this population that we're talking about benefits all of society, but also provides some incentives and some value to those landlords that are working with our, that would potentially be working with our system. In preparation of more permanent supportive housing units coming online, again, we have the units, but that case management is as important because we want people to stay, not just get housed, but stay housed. And so, increase in case management training, intensive case management, that would include trauma-informed case management, housing first, and harm reduction, again, to keep those clients to stay housed. I think that will also give an opportunity for current staff at our community providers to potentially level up. So, if they've been working at a certain tier, and if we give them some training around intensive case management, around permanent supportive housing, it may give them the opportunity to level up to be a PSH case manager, which then would increase, I'm assuming, their salary and their capacity to do this work.
I just want to mention quickly, sorry Lori to jump in, but Echo did just receive an award from JP Morgan Chase in the, and to do, to help create a more robust landlord incentive program. That announcement will be tomorrow with the Apartment Association there, and Echo hand-in-hand with JP Morgan Chase, with the idea that we'll start to more formally create these partnerships that will help create more units to come online in the next couple of years.
I knew that, Matt. That's why I teed it up for you. My last recommendation is, this is not an easy path, it's not a short path, but you're on the path. Stay on the path. Stay committed, stay resilient. That is how we're going to come through to really seeing the impact that our community wants to see, and that you all want to see around this very complex issue. And so, I'm hoping that with these recommended steps, that we can be more effective with our investments, be able to report to you more effectively, and other stakeholders about what your investments are buying, and be able to hold the programs and partners that we work with accountable, and then reallocate investments to gain better results, and ultimately, to reduce homelessness and the costs that are associated with it. So, I appreciate your wisdom, and your thoughts, and your reactions to what Matt and I have shared today.
I'm sure there aren't any questions.
Thank you, Lori and Matt. Also, want to thank council for your guidance and support throughout all this process. I thank city management at all levels, not just the city manager, but deputy city manager and assistant city managers. It truly has been all hands on deck. I thank the city departments, department directors, assistant directors, and staff, and community service providers. We wanted to provide this update on these recent really good efforts underway, not just by the city, our homeless strategy officer, but also our community service providers, our lead COC, Echo. And so, at that point, mayor and council will open the floor to questions that you may have.
Okay. I usually don't. I'm going to start this time. And then, I'll pass it around, and I won't take up a lot of time, and I'll let it come back to me to, because I have lots of questions, as I'm sure a lot of people do. Let me begin with, the last recommendation you make is to stay on the path. I understand that the definition of reaching, of ending homelessness, reaching effective zero, is that you're able to house people at the same rate that you're able to move people out of the, out of the system. My question is this, is it a realistic expectation that we could end homelessness in Austin?
Yes. And I think that really, it, what it comes down to is the prioritization that ending homelessness in this community is our community's priority. And there are, there's competing priorities, as there are for all of you, for a lot of reasons. I wouldn't be in this work if I didn't think ending homelessness was possible. And I firmly believe that with the right commitments, and the right, the continued work of great service providers here, and alignment and resources, that we can do that, yes.
And I would add to that, mayor, I think a lot of folks have used this word, the moral imperative, not only can we, but should we. And the answer is yes. These are residents of our community that deserve no less than to be sheltered. And it's incumbent upon all of us collectively, not just within the city organization, but throughout the community, to make this our goal, to effectively end homelessness in Austin.
And I just state, you know, parenthetically, that I'm proud to be part of a council that identified ending homelessness in our community as our collective number-one priority. And we did that a year and a half ago, as we, as we move into this, into this area. You've talked about, you're doing a kind of an evaluation of the system to figure out where we're backing up, and where we need the dollar spent, and where we need to fill gaps, so that we can in fact create the system that, that takes people off the street, and houses them, and gets them back into stabilized lives. And you've talked about some of the things that are, that are happening. The permanent supportive housing opportunity seems to be something that you said we're like way off on. And my understanding is, is that what you said was that we don't have a lot of owned permanent supportive housing, and that what we've been doing for permanent supportive housing has been using the rental market. We've been working with landlords and making units available, using the veterans vouchers when they're available, using rental subsidies when those aren't available. But there's a renewed focus or effort on trying to get permanent supportive housing that we have. We had some units that were, that were made available to us, I guess, in the rental kind of market, on Riverside Drive. That's 100 units that we didn't have before. My understanding is that there are people trying to get the permanent supportive housing units at the Rattgaver Center. We need community and other people's help. It's physically there to be able to get online. And then, the media is reporting that there are conversations associated now potentially with, with properties such as hotels. I'm not going to ask you to give us any details on real estate transactions, but is that kind of activity happening?
Yeah, I mean, to the best of my knowledge, I'll let the assistant city manager answer also. But yes, I believe that that type of activity is occurring. And I think what's really important about the recognition of permanent supportive housing as a need, it is also, it takes the deepest commitments from, from, from not only the service provider community, but from the various funding areas for funding. It is the most expensive type of resource that you can provide. It, you know, we're talking about a long-term rental subsidy, plus support services that are meant to serve people with very vulnerable, in very vulnerable states. And I think that commitment, though, we'd be looking towards the institutions, various institutions, to sort of help stand up some of that work. I think the healthcare system, the criminal justice system, those are going to be important partners as we move forward in this. Those partners are working nationally with service providers to get the care for those individuals that they're serving in their institutions out into the community, where it's less expensive to serve that population, and more effective for that, for the well-being and the health of the community. And so, the short answer is yes, that those things are happening. And I think we need more of those things happening. The Pay for Success Project will be one way that we're able to demonstrate outcomes to the criminal justice system and the healthcare system here in Austin. And I hope in the future that we'll be able to build off projects like that.
Yes, and that's an affirmative from our office as well. And one, one thing that I want to mention is that, of course, we don't want to talk about real estate transactions, but we certainly can talk about the financing source. The financing source was made available through council action from last year to expand the Waller Creek TERS. And so, it's our intention that that is the funding source for future properties. So, thank you, council, for your action last year to expand the Waller Creek TERS.
Okay. And to that end, we're not in this alone. And the lift that you're talking about is a lift that even if we deploy all of our resources, it's not something that we're going to be able to do completely ourselves. So, I think it's really important that we use this opportunity to make an appeal to the broader community to, to help us. And we have some people in the community that are stepping up in grand ways that we need to celebrate. You mentioned Chase tomorrow, the Apartment Association, who was one of the lead people in working with landlords, when we did the veterans, stepping up again here is incredible. It was a little over a year ago that Dina and Vijay Patel came to me, and, in the industry of working with motels, and offered their assistance to help facilitate that. And I got that information to Echo. I want to thank them. There are a lot of people in the community that are stepping up, and I would encourage others to do that, too. Now is the time for us, our community, to really come together. While we do have some money from that $30 million in the, in the Waller Creek TIF, we're going to be able to leverage that in a lot more places if we're not doing that alone, and if we have partners that are, that are, that are stepping up with us in that. And I think that's a really important invitation to make to the community. Did you want to say something?
Mayor, you're absolutely right. So, and as Matt has said, permanent supportive housing is our most expensive, our most effective way. And it goes a very long way in communities, moving the needle in homelessness. And that it, that does take a public-private partnership. And so, while the city will do its efforts, the expectation and the conversation is leaning towards how we match our public dollars with private dollars. So, again, when you think about permanent supportive housing, you need that property management, and you need that case services involved. And so, those commitments, we are looking for the private sector to be engaged and match the city's commitment.
And I appreciate that there are efforts moving forward with the landlord recruitment campaign, and you mentioned that. We need to move forward on that. Just a reminder again, associated with that, when we were successful in using a similar model with veterans, because we know what works, we just have to scale it. The private community stepped forward and established the risk fund that was used to, to help make it easier for landlords to make properties open for us. And I'm sure that's something that gets reestablished as part of this as well. And people could, could help and participate in, in, in that, in that after effort as well. Going through the recommendations here real fast, that was the number four, stay the path, because we can in fact end homelessness in this community. The procurement of the properties is happening. I mean, it sounds like if we talk about the number of beds, we could, we could be adding hundreds of new beds that don't, in units, before this year is over, that did not exist a month ago. Is that the kind of thing we are potentially looking at?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And then, the next recommendation you had was to review and evaluate the city's investments to align. investments to align. That makes perfect sense to me. I would imagine that's something you can just do on your own, but if you need any kind of council action to do that, you don't, great, it sounds like a, a very wise use of money. When you're creating your inter-agency working group, which also makes sense to me, too, I assume you'll invite the state to participate in inter-agency discussions. I hope that you would invite the state to be at the table. You talked about the intersection that the state has with the challenge that we have and just to articulate some of those real specifically, to, to help with the, the Austin transition effort. We've heard about this before, where there are folks that are transitioning out of incarceration in our city. It would be really helpful if the state would continue its support for people that have paid that debt, but, but, but might need in a new community for them, opportunities to be able to, to really stabilize their lives. I understand we have a similar situation with respect to foster care, that, that a lot of children move out of foster care at 18. And at that point, in some instances, the support just stops for them. I understand that there are component of the communities that we have in the city that are homeless, is that true? Do you know?
Aging out of the foster care system at 18, yeah. There are two main predictors, if you look nationally, for how people end up in the homeless response system and aging out of, being, having touched the foster care system is one of those predictors, for sure.
One of those, too.
Yeah.
Okay, so we could use additional state help with helping to manage the system that the state has with respect to, to foster care. Obviously, you mentioned mental health and mental health funding in this state. You said you thought it was like 49th, I don't know the number, but I know on the streets and on the ground, we need really significant help with respect to mental health support and, and, and treatment, as well as dealing with the hospital release issue that you, that you talked about. I have a couple of questions that are topical with respect to what's happening in the media. We, we've seen here recently, someone came in and, and made another one of these social media videos with a can full of needles. And we don't know whether those needles actually came from that place or not. We just have a social media clip of, of a container with needles. There was a report two weeks ago from staff, and we had public work staff, we had public health staff, we had PARD, and everyone said that there was no evidence at that point that we have increased levels of, of, of needles or feces or that kind of stuff in our community. I note KXAN article or piece that just came out today, I think, saying that that still is the case. Is that still the case in our city?
Mayor, that still is the case. And as I mentioned at the beginning of this, we do have our priority area leads that are here to answer any other questions outside of the briefing that you just had. So we could certainly go through questions related to the briefing and then open up questions to our priority area leads.
Okay.
But they are here to affirm that that is still the case.
Then let's hold off then, the priority area lead questions and the questions related to that. Final questions, and then I'll pass it to my colleagues with respect to, to the arch downtown. I think that one of the reasons that the council asked for initial attention with respect to the arch was almost a proof of concept to the community. So the community could see that if we put resources against it and the attention against it, we can, we can help people even in some of the most challenged parts of our city and not disperse people that are experiencing homelessness, but actually house them, actually put them on a path to be able to stabilize their lives. And I want to thank you for the efforts. It's already looking like it's moving people into, into housing. Do you have a feel at all for what the timeline would be for the, for the, for the community on this? That's timeline question is number one. And then the second question, manager, is whether we can set something up so that there could be kind of a weekly report that's reporting meaningful numbers, so that the community can, can, can see what's happening over time and, and see that either these folks are being successful or, or not, so we know whether we're doing meaningful work or not.
So, my mantra, and I don't know if everybody in the provider community always agrees with me, but I say however long it takes with whatever it takes. And most of them do.
In fact, I wrote that down when you said that.
And that is because I want the proof of concept to be there. Housing first does work. It is the national best practice. It is what HUD has adopted. It is what the USICH, which is the inter-agency council for the US government, has adopted. And that is something that has been proven here in this community, and we should stay steadfast to that. So it is important that we see that in real-time action outside of the arch. You know, there's a lot of factors to what's happening outside of the arch. Again, you know, the inflow, we haven't been able to stop the inflow. So there's new folks that are coming in every day outside of the arch because of those systems that are contributing to that. But, you know, again, without a place for folks to land, and again, we're utilizing inappropriate resources, we're using rapid rehousing instead of PSH, we need more PSH. It is going to be a, a series of weeks before you start to see those individuals. And we can give you progress reports. Our goal is around the progress reports and the numbers. Our goal is not the optics. I have said before, there's a difference between not seeing the homeless and ending homelessness. And the goal and the will of the provider community and my office and Echo is on ending homelessness, not on not seeing the homeless. And so those are where our efforts are. So we're not really focused on what the optics are. The optics will just organically happen on its own, but we are focused on those 99 and we will be able to provide you progress reports around those 99 individuals.
And I just think it's, it's important to mention, so, you know, when Lori talks about the optics, you know, as stated previously in the presentation, from August 19th to present, we've housed around 450 households. So that's four times the amount of folks who are outside of the arch. Now, the, the impact of the arch is real, and I understand it necessary to make, to help the community understand that this system can, can produce outcomes associated with when we, when we're targeting resources to a certain area. But that work has been done four times over in the last three months in, in this community already. And so that, that, that's an important thing to remember while we're, while we're looking at the arch and the pilot program.
And I think that's an important thing to say, and I think it's important that we, in these weekly reports, every other week here, the off week, perhaps by a memo or something like that, so the community continues, can continue to follow that. But we also have to, my, as we do that, what organically happens is it'll be things that people can see. Or they'll see numbers, as we were focused on that 99, that we're actually housing those 90. They can see that we, but just by looking at the numbers, as you report them back, that we're able to do that. And I think that's important to do, because we have some people in the community right now that are with us, that want to be with us, that want to see us end homelessness in our city, but they need to know that it's something that we can do. And, and part of our work while we do it is letting people see that while we're doing that. I think that will bring more and more people to be part of this. It'll be, bring more and more people from the community to help, more and more people to put their shoulder to that, to that stone and, and to, and to help us take care of everybody in our city. So being able to demonstrate things would be real important. All right, I'm going to share the floor with others on the council, Anne, and then Pio.
Thank you. First off, let me just say that I'm, I'm very excited to hear the, to hear what you're telling us today. I think that you all have done a lot of really, really good work in a very short amount of time. And I want you to know it's recognized and appreciated. And, and I, I certainly recognize and understand how difficult it is. So I want to say thank you. And, and I feel confident that we're on a path. And I feel confident that we're, that we're pulling together the expertise that we need. And I know that you all will tell us as we need additional expertise and/or other things that you all, not expertise, but resources that you all may need. So I just have a couple of questions on three different areas. So the first area I want to ask about is sort of a bigger picture area. And, and that has to do, I think, I think, I think Lori, that you, you mentioned in your recommendations, the moving forward with, I forget how you, how you talked about it, but moving forward with an analysis to come back in 20, first part of 2020. I'm sorry, I don't have that right in front of me, but.
Recommendation two.
Yes, the recommendation you're talking about. So my question is, at the end, at the end of that process, do you think that, do you think that that will help us lead into having what we might be calling a dashboard at some point? So that we can, and I'd love for you to, to speak to that, because, you know, that will help us at some point really understanding what we're measuring? So can you speak to that for a minute?
Yeah, absolutely. And you warmed my heart saying dashboard, because I've been talking about dashboards a little bit, right? So, yeah, so I think there's a way that we could absolutely, after that 2020 initial report, is start looking at, you know, how is it that we want to spend our money and where are we investing it and where are we at with that progress with the various objectives? And so I think with, you know, recommendation one is, this is going to be my attempt to try and do it at a very small level with just a few of us and kind of informally just make sure we're all having the conversations, that we're not duplicating services, we're not duplicating resources, and our resources are, are complementing each other. And so that's recommendation one. Recommendation two is really to have somebody who has done this in other communities really drill into that. And then I think a part of that is, again, this person would look at our investment, say, okay, are we matching to the action plan? And so the dashboard, I think, would talk about city funding, apply to the Echo action plan, and then give us the progress report of us helping to reach those objectives that we set out to do last, last year. And then I would also say that, and I always, and it's probably offensive that I say a grown-up system. Is, are you offended? So I always say, when we have a grown-up system, you know, there's a great, on, so when I say this, please don't ask us to do this yet, because we're not ready for it. But in forecasting and futuring, as we kind of, you know, grow up into this housing first is, there are actual online live dashboard reports around the people who have been housed. So instead of me asking Matt and asking Integral Care and asking everybody, okay, what are your numbers? There's an actual online dashboard. Nashville has one, it's fantastic. It was put together by a university, and it tells real time the number of people who are in shelter, the number of people who are homeless, the number of people who have been housed. I can't wait for our community to have that, because that's one tool where people can see real-time work that our providers and the city of Austin is doing. And so I'm mentioning that publicly, Echo, because I'm hoping we can do that together.
Well, I mean, that's a, yeah, absolutely. I mean, that's a function of the homeless management information system. You know, we, we can create dashboards when, and you can watch in real time as the service providers are entering information into HMS, de-identify, de-identified information, of course, aggregate data, but that's a absolutely possible thing and currently can be built out in our, in our system, in the system that we have. I think it's, it's, it's a more real, it's, it's more real and closer, closer than you think.
Thank you. I have just two more short questions. The second one was a different area, and that has to go to, that goes to the need for permanent supportive housing. I just want to ask, and it may not be something that you all answer now, but maybe want to speak to next time, but, you know, we have, we were fortunate in our community to pass a $250 million bond for housing, and some of those dollars were contemplated for permanent supportive housing. I don't remember what we looked at in terms of how much, but I'm, can I assume that you all are working with our NHCD folks on accelerating the use of those dollars or accessing those dollars or whatever we need to do with that bond money to, to make sure that we get PS, more PSH resources as soon as we can?
Absolutely. And we've got our housing priority area leads here. You can answer that question following the briefing. And you're absolutely right, the city dollars, and more importantly, of course, we've got tax credits available that we can put towards this effort, as well as other programs. But at the conclusion of, of course, the briefing and question answers, that might be a question that we bring our housing priority area leads up here to, to speak to.
Okay, I, I would like to just touch on that, so. And then my last of, of three, three questions is, goes back to the, the Guided Path pilot, which by the way, I just want to say thank you again. It really, I'm very heartened by what I'm hearing in terms of that approach. And understand the complexities of it, but I, but it sounds to me like you really, you guys really know what you're doing and you're, you and the service providers, and you're really going down that path. So I appreciate that. So my question is, or, and it's a question again for, for the future, I think, is understanding that it'll take as long as it does with whatever resources it does. I would like to get an idea of, of, well, I guess my request is, at the appropriate time, if you will bring to us your request for the resources that are needed to take that program to scale and, and that you give us an idea as soon as you reasonably can on what you think will be necessary to take it to scale. So I think it's something that will be important for us throughout the community. And I think beginning this work around the arch is critical, and you're going to learn so much from this work around the arch. But I know it's going to take additional resources to bring it to scale throughout the community. And, and also you have, you have questions about what that means, what does bring it to scale mean, you know? So all of those kinds of things, I would, I'd ask you to give us, as soon as you have some idea of that, even if you haven't completely formulated how you think we should proceed, that would be helpful information to have.
Council member, let me just touch on one thing that relates to what you were describing, and then also conversations around other real estate transactions. Even though after this Thursday, we only have two council meetings left this year, I am hearing loud and clear that I don't want to delay any potential action that council may need to take regarding additional next steps. And so I will not hesitate to talk about calling a special called meeting to make sure that we can act on that as soon as possible.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's all.
And then Daria.
Thank you for that report. Lori, I was kind of alarmed when you mentioned that I used to be on the halfway house board for parolees and, and we used to get funding from the state. Are you, are you getting funding when you have these parolees get assigned to, to the?
No, I mean, my, my understanding is that, that, that there is, well, I know for sure that there is no follow-up funding for those folks that are being discharged and dropped off essentially outside of the arch.
Man, I'm, I'm really alarming that, because I, I served on the halfway house for almost eight years, and we were always getting funded from the state whenever they released a parolee, especially to a halfway house. That was the tradition. When we lost the contract, they were giving us clients that had full-blown AIDS that we couldn't handle. And they said we didn't take those clients, that they were going to close us, and sure enough, they closed us up. And we lost all these beds. We had about 43 beds back then for the parolees, and we were getting funded by the state by taking in these people that were being released. And it's very alarming that they're doing this now without even providing any kind of support to the city, especially to the city of Austin, where it sounds like they're, the majority are coming down here, they're having to report, and that's very alarming to me. And I think it's, it's sad, you know, that the, the state is doing that to us.
Council member, if I may? So if, if there are funds in the community that goes to those halfway houses, it may be that they're at capacity. And so again, it's about the amount of inflow, and now they're at capacity, and so then they flow out into the streets. You know, there has been a lot of research about school to prison to homelessness pipeline that's real. And there are communities and states who have really begun to tackle corrections to homelessness issue. And it's a very, and there's been a couple of case studies that I believe in the northeast part of the country where corrections actually provided funds for supportive housing for those who were released and were able to utilize corrections dollars. dollars to do that, to complement any of the local dollars or state dollars. But it's a real thing that's happening across our country, not just here in our community. And so I just want to honor, you know, the fact that if the state is providing dollars, it may not be enough, or the halfway houses may be at capacity, or maybe there might be enough providers around the halfway house, but the school to prison to homelessness pipeline is here.
Yes, and the thing is, is that, you know, even though, when they were releasing them to us, to our halfway house, we were getting funding, and also funding, enough funding to help these people get back on their feet and to find a job, and it didn't seem like that's what they're doing here at the Echo. They're releasing them, they're, then something is wrong here in this, and I hope that we can find out what's going on.
Kathy, and then, Dianne.
Mine's kind of related to this, do you mind if I have the same question?
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Councilor Tovar. Yeah, you mentioned, you said that all parolees in the state are released in Austin?
So, this is, I think there's probably others who might be able to speak a little bit more clearly on this. From my understanding, from what I know, and again, this is very preliminary, is that anybody, and I think it's from state or federal, I don't know where it is, anybody who's released in the state of Texas needs to come to Austin to get certified or checked in to the Austin Recovery, or, I'm sorry, I don't know what it's called. And so my understanding is, once they are checked in, that they can't leave the area until a certain period of time. I don't know if anybody else is in the room that can speak more specifically about it. Matt, do you have any more information about it? But, I mean, that's, we, even when I was out during those few days outside the arch, there were a few people who said that that's where they were coming from, and that they actually wanted to go home, but couldn't.
And I want to be, I guess I want, in asking that question, I want to be clear that I have no problem with that system in and of itself, you know, if they've gone through the process, they've served their time, they've paid their debt to society, not to even mention the disparate impact that minorities face with arrests and other components of the criminal justice system. I do have a problem if the state is not providing appropriate resources to help, as Pia stated, to help people get back on their feet. And so I'd be interested in understanding exactly what the state does provide, and possibly maybe adding that to our legislative agenda of things that we ask our state leaders to lobby for, to help folks get back on their feet. And then I just wanted to add, thank you for these recommendations that you have provided. I think this is the exact expertise we were looking for in this extremely difficult and challenging conversation we've been having, and both of you are relatively new, and I'm so grateful that both of you are here. I think it has added just a great amount of expertise to this conversation, and I think Austin's very lucky to have the two of you, and of course, our city staff doing such a great job as well. A last question is, the recommendations in here, do you, I don't know if you asked this, Mayor, I think you did, but.
Go ahead.
Do you need additional direction for any of these? Is this, this is all stuff that you think you can do without additional direction from council? Is that right?
Yeah, councilmember, no. And just, we wanted to get feedback on this, as the direction we're going, if there were any tweaks that we want to hear from council. But as I stated earlier, if there were specific actions council needed to take, I'm not going to hesitate to make sure that we can act on those as soon as possible. But the short answer is no.
Great, thank you.
Kathy?
Thank you, and I echo my thanks for all the hard work that our leaders who are at the table are providing, as well as our departmental staff and the many, many providers who are participating in the effort, especially the encampment response strategy. I have lots and lots of questions, but I'll narrow it down, and then hopefully have some time to ask some of the more specific ones outside of this setting. With regard to the Guided Path project, on page, let's see, 14, you talk, with regard to the individuals, the 75 who have been identified and are either enrolled or pending enrollment into appropriate programs, can you give us some examples of what some of those programs are?
Sure, so that could be, it's called BSS Plus here, so that's through Caritas. So that could mean that somebody who is just looking for employment with some needed services to get them on the path towards housing is kind of a lower need. Others would be, I believe that DAC has provided several spots for permanent supportive housing. They would first be placed with the arch, enrolled in the arch, and they would then be assigned a case manager through the arch, and then work towards a housing solution plan. So it also includes respite slots, also includes mental health treatment slots. Sobering Center, I believe, also provided some slots. And then whenever somebody is provided a spot, or I call them slots, a slot in any one of those programs, it's always attached to some type of case management. So when you're enrolled, you are enrolled in a program, and somebody's going to now be attached to you as you move through the process of concluding your housing crisis.
And by Sobering Center, I assume you meant either for that evening, or we're connected to some kind of longer-term program, because we don't provide housing at the Sobering Center?
Yes, so, and again, you have to excuse me, you know, five weeks in, I don't know all the agencies as intimately I wish, as I wish I could, and so I am kind of misspeaking a little bit when it comes to that, but I do know that there were locations, I don't know.
That's okay, I think that gives me a good sense of.
You can remind me. Placement, okay, yeah.
Great, thank you. And so what are the, do you have a sense of, like, what the timeframes are for the enrollment? Some are pending enrollment, do you have a, I mean, some, it sounds like there might be slots immediately available, some might be waiting for a slot to open up, but they're in the queue.
So pending enrollment means that they have a spot, but we still need to go and, they may have moved away from the arch, or they may not have been out there when we're kind of refinancing somebody, or they're reluctant still. But we're saying, this is still your enrollment, we want you to be a part of this program, and so there's ongoing engagement with those folks. So when we say someone's enrolled, that means we, that program has all the information that they need to be able to say, okay, this is our client. The other word I said is that they're, or pending means that they're just waiting to get all the information from that client and get the client's acceptance into the program.
That's great. I mean, that really is huge, that you were able to find, with the collaboration with the providers, so many, so many spots so quick, with such a short amount of time. That's really huge.
And it says a lot of, I can't say enough about the provider community, the fact of their generosity and their will, and making this a priority, and pretty much us jumping their priorities for this is really exceptional, and we have several people in the room, we have Greg from the arch and Darrellin from Integral Care, who have just been heroic in their leadership and the heavy lift towards this. So you guys have all the right elements to move this forward in a successful way.
Yeah, I just want to second that also, and Caritas not in the room today, been an integral member in that group.
And so when, during the pilot program, a few years, a few summers ago, that was similar in nature, there weren't new resources allocated to it, and as I gather, that was part of why it wasn't as kind of sustainable change. Can you, I want to, I guess, echo what Councilmember Kitchen said in terms of, you know, as soon as you have a sense of what the resource need is for making sure that all of those currently outside the arch, but in the other areas that are surrounding, within that kind of arch overlay, as soon as you have some sense of what the additional resource need might be, that would be really helpful to have.
Yeah, and I think we, you know, we've already started to identify that through the pilot with the 24 folks who aren't matched to programs or enrollment. We have that gap, we obviously have that 24-person service need gap, and I think more appropriately, to Laurie's comments before, is that we are, we are using resources right now that we normally wouldn't use, say, a rapid rehousing resource for someone who should have a permanent supportive housing resource, because that resource doesn't exist in our community. So not only is there a gap in actually getting the number of resources to the population, but there's also a gap in the type of resource to be used that needs to be implemented in that scenario, and I think we'll be able to provide both, a gap analysis around both of those populations for you.
I would add to that, councilmember, is that, you know, through the second recommendation, the tipping point is going to be permanent supportive housing. So, you know, I can already tell you, you know, any, without any formal recommendation or report, or any formal gap analysis, permanent supportive housing is going to be the tipping point for this community.
Yeah, and I would just say, obviously, I'd second that, and I know there are more questions, but I would also just mention, we know that gap need for PSH in our community based on our coordinated entry list, we can say affirmably that if we had this many permanent supportive housing units, we would have no more chronic homelessness here in Austin as it currently stands. And so that information does exist, but it is a large number.
Do you have a figure for how many of the individuals who you've been speaking with outside the arch were already in the coordinated entry system, coordinated, had been through coordinated assessment?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I can get you the exact number, it's in an email that's on my phone right now, but I would say, I've heard as many as 90% of the folks have had assessments that are outside of the arch, so it's not a willingness to engage in the system.
And I would also mention that, you know, out of the, and I changed 75 to 74, because one of those folks, we were able to reunite with family, so 74 of the 99, some of that 74 were already enrolled in programs. So they were enrolled in programs, but still didn't have that permanent spot to land in yet, and so that is also part of the population that we're talking about.
I think that would be really important information to have, you know, I think it's very important for the community to understand that some of the individuals outside the arch are, have been through coordinated assessment and are waiting that permanent solution to their housing crisis, and that really requires, as you've, as many people today have said, more participation from our private partners. So when you say that some of those individuals were enrolled in programs, are they enrolled now in different programs, or the same programs, but with a more housing-focused path?
Yes, and knowing that we are going to be tracking the outcomes of those, so there's a little bit of pressure on the providers as we're kind of talking about this, and knowing that we're expecting to see the results, whether they're good, bad, or ugly, we want to see what the results are, and the intention is, even after these folks are housed, we're still going to follow them, because we want them to stay housed, and we want to continue to have them stable. So even if all 99 come into a place of stability, six months, a year after that, we want to be able to show the continued success or the barriers to keeping them housed.
Yeah, and I just want to add that that's the benefit of our HMIS system that currently exists, is that we've actually created a program within HMIS that we will be able to track these folks and their success in housing and through the various programs, and I'll be able to run that report for you in 2030, if necessary, you know, that far down the line, so.
Thanks. As I mentioned, I have a lot of questions, some of them I think I'll leave for now, but one that I do want to talk about in this setting is the hotel motel, which I think sounds like a terrific idea, and I'm very supportive, and I want to acknowledge that the Waller Creek Conservancy actually, when they started meeting with our offices to talk about extending that TIF and the time period for that, they actually raised this as a suggestion that it would throw off additional money, and that could be used for homelessness, and I just want to appreciate them for that. I think that's going to really be critical funding. Can you talk, so I'm very supportive of hotel motels, but I think we, I really would like to kind of come back around to the question of whether Health South would be a temporary solution in this conversation, and what the difference, what differences you might see between that facility, which was operationalized of a couple of years ago as a rehab facility, and a hotel in terms of the infrastructure support that it provides, understanding that it needs some repairs, and I know the staff are evaluating the cost of those, but in terms of the infrastructure that that would afford in the building?
So I, I'll only speak, I can speak to the idea that, from a hotel perspective, what we end up with is, we're able to convert those units to permanent supportive housing over time, and, you know, I think that I'm not, I know Health South is going to take some work, I'm, to be honest with you, I'm not familiar with the entire scope of the Health South, the work that needs to be done to bring that into, for use, either in, you know, an emergency shelter situation, or bridge housing situation, or from a permanent supportive housing. I think that, right now, what we're looking for is sustainable, long-term solutions to impact people's situation on the street now, and from a hotel perspective, what we're able to do is, what we would be able to do, and what other communities have done, is get people inside immediately, get them assessed for need, if their desire is, because housing, a big part of Housing First is your ability to choose where you stay and how you access the homeless response system. So if their desire is to stay at the hotel, that's a perfectly reasonable outcome for them, they enjoy the location, they enjoy the space and the community provided by that, we're able to create permanent supportive housing out of that model, and that's neither better nor worse, I'm not comparing the two, just to state that, from a sustainability scenario, is what is attractive about the hotel motel acquisition. Now, that being said, not every community has the type of resource like Health South and their community, and what, and how that resource could be leveraged to support people experiencing homelessness here, so there's no real, you know, there's no community that you could point to necessarily to say, this is, they've done this similarly, and this is how it worked, and this is how it looked. So I think that that's probably one of the complexities to that situation.
And so it sounds like, then, the two things that would be different are the potential costs of repairing, and then, but the bigger point that you're mentioning is the long-term sustainability of that option. When you're looking at hotels, you're looking for something that can also serve as permanent supportive housing, and that, and I think, I would concur that Health South won't be that longer-term option.
Yeah.
Again, I think it should still continue to be in the mix as a shorter-term option, if, in your assessments, you're finding that there aren't enough places for individuals experiencing homelessness to be in the short term.
Thank you, councilmember. We view it as an asset as well, and just like to know, the other thing that we're contemplating is the need for storage, and perhaps maybe the parking garage might serve as a storage facility. And so we're beginning to explore that conversation, because we know ultimately that the development will take some time, and so what are those interim uses that we can use with that asset?
Thank you.
Jimmy, and then Allison.
Thank you, and thanks to my colleagues, many of the questions I wrote down have already been addressed, so I can be much briefer than I thought I was going to be. Dashboard especially was a big thing I had circled on my sheet. I know my district's really asking for that type of access to data, so it's exciting to hear that that is maybe closer than we thought. Of course, the sooner the better on that. The, you know, Councilmember Bruntoria, your story about the halfway house really strikes me as this long-tail impacts of crises that the state has ignored. For the AIDS crisis to have been used in those years as a way to undermine public service to folks coming out of incarceration is, it's difficult to wrap my head around that. And I really hope that we can be thinking as a state about how we do this. I find it shocking that there is any service provided in the state of Texas where only one city is the place where that service is provided. That seems mind-boggling. We've provided similar services in Dallas and Houston, at the very least, just as the size of the state, and maybe that can be part of our advocacy to our state representatives. The, Laurie, something you said that I really appreciated is a focus on return on investment. Some of the things that I hear from my constituents, and it's often a concern of myself, is that the dollars that we're spending are maximized to their greatest opportunity. It's one of my concerns with the Health South conversation, is that the money we would invest to repair it would not end up being the best long-term use of those dollars. But it's good to know that you all are considering that in other ways, like storage, which I hadn't thought of before, which might be a fair use of a parking garage or other facilities, but especially the coordination through Echo, which I think is going to be really important, so that the city itself is not contributing to the fracturing of the system, that we're leveraging, fully maximizing the federal dollars that are coming through that agency, and considering it at a regional level. You know, my district, as I often talk about, goes into Williamson County, and I don't think Williamson County has an Echo. They participate in what they call the Balance of State, which is probably not the best option for a county growing so rapidly as Williamson County. And so I think those, where my offices, through CAPCO, leading some conversations regionally about this issue, and that's come up, and we'll continue that work at a regional level. There are other cities in our region that are experiencing homelessness at kind of unexpected scale, that you don't really hear about as much. unexpected scale, that you don't really hear about as much as you hear about Austin. But my question for you is on, on the altruism of our community, I've given numerous talks to different groups that have asked me, what, what do they do? Where do they go help? I had one group I was speaking to where one of the people stood up and said, "Well, give me all your old shoes, and then I'll go hand them out to the people under the overpass", and I had to talk to him about how that's probably not the best use of your time and resources, and they probably don't even fit the people you're handing the shoes to, so, but his question was, "Well, what do we do? What do, what do they do?"
So I've, it's a great question, I've provided, I've sort of come to a, to an answer that I feel comfortable giving, through a lot of questioning along that line, because it's a, it's a complicated question with some complex answers. I think one of the things people need to start to do is really stand up and have difficult conversations in their groups, with their families, in their faith-based communities, at their jobs, with their friends, about the stigma associated with people experiencing homelessness, and being willing to have a conversation that can de-stigmatize that work and humanize people in those experiences. The politicized nature of this work right now is certainly in Austin, it's at an all-time high, I imagine, I guess, I've been here for three months, it certainly feels like it's spiking at this time, and I think the, the reason for that is because there is not, there has not been a lot of gray area, this community hasn't really, they're, we're working to come together on some gray, some, some basic agreements, and some, some understanding that, that people from both sides of the, you know, wherever you are in politics, wherever you are in your ideas around homelessness, like that, bringing people closer together so that, so that the service providers and the systems that are at work can, can continue to work, and so that we're not answering questions, you know, no offense to council, about ordinances, about our governor's statements that are unhelpful, and, and, but, and to take the focus away from the work that's being done, from the 450 people that are housed since August 19th, that, that work is paramount to this issue, and all of the discussion around that work, we need, we just need time and the ability to resource that work effectively, and we'll see a greater impact, and I think that, so my request, in short, is get involved, get involved locally where you can, you know, the shoe donation is important, the, the, you know, those sorts of things that happen on a local level, so that you can be and attach yourself to the, to the larger homeless response system is important, but also be willing to stand up in, in your community and say, "This isn't right, and I believe that housing is a human right, and access to quality healthcare are human rights, and I'm willing to have that difficult discussion with someone that tells me that, that these persons, these people experiencing homelessness in our streets are there because they're, they're addicted to drugs, or, and they want to be there, and they want this type of lifestyle in these camps", and that, that information is false, and that narrative is damaging.
I've been asked that question a lot.
So, one, if people are so moved that they want to give something, in my long, and I think you guys know my history around disaster recovery response and international development, the best thing that you can do is give money, give funding, and we have a lot of good community providers, that provider community, who's doing this really difficult work, and those investments from the private sector and from individuals is absolutely needed, so I know one of the things that our website is working on is to try, try and drive people, if they want to give through money and want to be a part, is, is that way, so we're going to be listing the various providers, and just sharing how they can be able to give or to donate. Advocacy is hard to measure in dollars, right, and what Matt is talking about is if somebody really wants to be a part of transformational change around this very complex issue, is to build your knowledge and awareness and become an advocate for this issue, because advocacy doesn't get funded, and advocacy gets disvalued, but it goes the longest and the length of it, and so, again, I would, I appreciate what, what Matt said. I also, and from my experience, I believe there's a point where helping hurts, so there's a lot of good-hearted people who are, who feel like they're doing a, a good thing by handing out items that they believe that somebody might need, but without you knowing that person and understanding their narrative and their story, you may actually be harming rather than hurting them, and we have a large provider community who's working very hard to build those relationships and understanding of what that person actually needs, and so I'm just trying to figure out what that would actually look like, but I just want to articulate that there is a point when helping hurts, when you feel like you're, you're doing something good, but without really knowing that person, again, their narrative and their story and their path ahead, you could be hurting, so advocacy and direct dollars is the best way for, I believe, someone could help. I would also say, really, one, quick, I want to make sure that when I mention the Austin Transits Center, those are anecdotal information that I received from those that we were surveying outside, the next time I come to a work session, I will provide more detailed information about what this is, and the process that a parolee has to take, whether they're from Austin or outside of Austin, so I can make sure that we clear up that and have a, a very clear understanding of that.
And to that end, even if there are other locations around the state, and I think there might be, the point that you're making, I think, is still really valid, that we have people who are here, because they have to be here, whether there are other places around the state or not, but then they're here, and they have to wait while they're here, or they've been brought here like a magnet with no resources to be able to help facilitate their, their lives at that point, so, so I think the point that you, that you made is still really valid.
Yeah, and thank you, Laurie, Matt, and all valid points, and one thing I just want to remind council and the public, is that your question is not new. The five prongs of the action plan that Matt had talked about earlier, one of the prongs is community commitment, and within that community commitment, there are strategies, such as creating options menu for the public to be involved in the solutions, to create an electronic platform for volunteers to support the work, create a communication strategy that encourages people to give to food and service organizations, and so what we've got to do with staff is effectuate those strategies with ECHO, so that way we can be very clear in that response when that question comes up, as to what the community can do. So to Laurie's point earlier, we have to state the path, the path is the action plan, one of the action plan prongs is community commitment, and so we just need to effectuate those strategies.
Topic leads, we can raise that one if you want to as well.
You, you all are doing some great work, thanks.
So, I also have been hearing a lot about the, what the community can do, and I think that we need to be careful to not let perfection prevent us from getting that information out, I've not yet heard it being up on the city's website for homelessness, what you can do, and at the very least, we can have up there the list of organizations that are doing great things, and people can go donate, there are groups that have volunteer opportunities, it doesn't have to be perfect to be helpful, and so I think we, we ought to, to be moving forward with that, because it's something that we hear a lot from the community. I wanted to follow up a little bit on, Matt, your comments about the demographics, and some frustration of, of that being misused. Can you provide, I'm not sure if you can provide on the whole community, but to the extent that you can provide some demographic information, and the overlapping needs that some of the population are experiencing homelessness have, could you, can you expound on that? Because I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of misconceptions, and I, and I'm frankly a little bit concerned, I think the parole conversation is an important one, and one we have to explore, but I think it's ripe for politicization, and I, I want to make sure that we're not walking away saying this is a huge part of our homeless population, because I don't believe that it is, it may be a small piece of it, and we may need to address it, we may need to make sure that the state is providing resources appropriately, but I don't want people to walk away and think that's what's going on, and that's what's driving, we have a lot of new folks from Austin who are experiencing homelessness, and I think some additional demographic data would be really helpful.
Sure, so, without, in front of me, there are, there are some pieces to the demographic data that I've memorized because they're so startling, one, one piece to that data is that, you know, the black African-American population here in Austin is 8% of the total population, but makes up 35% of people experiencing homelessness, and 42% of the people incarcerated in this county and city. I think worth mentioning here, just because I feel, I would feel remiss to not mention it, is that homelessness, as it exists nationally, and when we're looking at demographics, I mean, it's very clear that it's a symptom of racism in our country, and we need to keep that at the forefront of our discussion and in our minds. When controlling for poverty in this country, if you're black or brown, you're 85% more likely to have experienced homelessness than you are if you're white, and I think that's an important statistic that we need to remember, that those folks are represented disproportionately in Austin's system, in our HMIS, in our coordinated entry system, and that's, that's important. Now to dig into some other factors associated with the demographics of people experiencing homelessness here, 2% of our population, as of when I did the LBJ Forum, which was in, oh, gosh.
August.
Is that 2019 or 2018, I'm sorry, in August 2019, 2% of the, the total population in our coordinated entry system, that's 2% of about 7,500 people, reported an only having a substance use disorder, that was their primary, and that was it. More than 80% reported having a physical health condition, so we're talking about, we're talking about access to quality, affordable healthcare as a driver for people experiencing homelessness, whether that's an unexpected medical bill, whether that's, you know, just access to that, you know, you're on the fringe of being able to afford your place, and you need to go in for a primary care checkup that costs you hundreds of dollars, and all of a sudden, you can't make your rent, I think those, and with families, it's exacerbated from that perspective, so I think it's really important that the co-occurring nature of that, and then when people are experiencing homelessness, and they have a serious medical condition, that they, that they don't have access to appropriate medical care, a lot of folks, you know, that ends in people using substances on many occasions, for a pain, from a pain perspective, and also, I think, you know, it leads to exacerbated mental health symptoms, as we've talked about, the lack of access and funding associated with mental health care. We have some agencies that do incredible work around this, I want to be clear, we have a homeless healthcare team here in, in Austin that does great work, and we have people providing mental health care here, and it's just not enough, and so, that, that number, that 2% number, I think, goes a long way to talk about that, the myth, or the understanding, or the feeling in the community that people are homeless, experiencing homelessness because of a substance use condition, as opposed to most of the other factors, the systemic and structural factors that lead to homelessness, which is why homelessness is such a complex issue to solve. And I, ECHO has a lot of information, a lot of reports on our website that you can, you can access, we did an equity, there was an equity report released in February, I believe, of 2019, that details a lot of the inequities in our system, and sort of talks, talks a little bit about that, and then, of course, we have the data from our point-in-time count and, and some other data points that you could pull from there, that, that talk about conditions and, and physical mental health.
So if someone wanted to know about how many are families, how many are individuals, how many are veterans, how many are youth?
Yes.
All that information would be on the ECHO.
Yeah, you can look at the ECHO website for that, and I, but I will say, the, you know, we have to do, there is a piece of education that has to be, that has to happen around what the point-in-time count means, and just, that's a snapshot of people, of people experiencing homelessness on one night in January, where we could actually physically count those folks and have them fill out a survey, so I think that's important to recognize that, yes, there's a number on the website, it means something, HUD requires us to do that, but that's not the only data point associated with people experiencing homelessness.
Thank you, I think, you know, whatever we can do to get out that data, I think, would be really helpful in dispelling some of the myths that are, that are out there. I wanted to dig a little bit into a comment that Laurie made about the folks that you were working with and the engagement strategy, you noted that they were willing to engage in the system, you also mentioned that many of them were already part of the continuum of care process, but they don't want to go into emergency shelter, and we've been talking about that for a while, and one of the reasons we're doing the encampment strategy is in part to, to address some of those experiences that they may have had with the emergency shelter, and obviously, we are working to renovate and, and change procedures at the arch itself. Is that, so they're willing to enter into the system, but they don't want to be at the emergency shelter, what portion of that population is, is expressing that?
Out of the night, so I, I don't know the exact number, again, it was just anecdotal, but that's consistent nationally around all the unsheltered population entering a shelter, and also, many, and I, when I was out there with Greg, with two weeks ago, and we were talking, you know, we're trying to get people to come inside, they're like, "Well, I, what do I get when I get inside?", you know, and before, you get a shower, some laundry, some meals, well, now, you get a case manager and you get a path to housing, that's new, so it's almost like we are doing a commercial out there, like, "Come in!", it's changed, and here's why, and so, it's now the, the unsheltered population's understanding that, okay, the arch is now positioned differently, arch is one of many shelters that we have in our community, and so, rights, positioning each shelter to be the same as what the arch is doing, is going to be another significant tipping point to getting the unsheltered population into shelter, but it has also been, national statistics have shown that communities who have made significant strides on getting people housed are actually housing people from the streets much faster than they're housing people in, from shelter, and they were taking, I think, the, the top 20 continuums of care in the country, and just looking at the reduction of shelter spaces versus the number of people that are being housed, and they were actually housing more people from the streets than they were from the shelter. And so, you know, based upon what I'm seeing here from the guided path, and as I'm just having, again, one-on-one conversations with individuals, they are just like, you know, "It's just easier for me to be out here, this is where my friends are at, this is where my community is, I feel safer out here", and sometimes even safer than inside of a, a shelter, for whatever their, their reasons are, or maybe it's because they still have addiction issues, and they want to be able to self-medicate, so there's many reasons why people are choosing to stay unsheltered and wait for housing until they move through that process.
Thank you, and I'm not sure which of you, but can one of you please speak to what the role of the county is, and what the role of central health ought to be, we've spoken a little bit about the state and their role, but throughout this conversation, the county and central health have been fairly absent beyond being part of the Pay for Success project.
So...
And I think traditionally, these are not city issues, these are county roles, the ones that you're saying are causing and contributing the most, beyond the housing portion, to the problem, so what is their role, what could their role be, and how do we improve it?
So, I, I think you're right to point to the Pay for Success Project as a way that they are participating in this current system, in the homeless response system, the county also does provide some funding to ECHO, and I don't have an exact dollar amount in front of me, but for, to stand up our operations. I will say, I think, I think the role of central health and of the county, as far as the future role, and we're looking at the, sort of what's, the what's next scenario, is to start to take a hard look at the costs associated with the care they provide to people experiencing homelessness, and to say, "It's more cost-effective for the taxpayer and for, for people", and it's, and let me just preface this talk about money and people's lives by saying that, I, I don't think this should, it should be a cost-saving scenario why we're getting people inside and into housing, but we've gotten to the place where we have to provide a financial, or show a financial benefit in some cases, which I think I'd love to kind of pivot off that as a sticking point here, but I'm going to answer the question more effectively if I talk about it financially, I think, you know, the healthcare systems and the criminal justice system would be smart to engage more effectively and meaningfully with the homeless response system, and if you look at returns to incarceration for what we might consider low-level criminal offenses, or since the ordinance change, we're seeing less of the criminalization of homelessness, of course, but that process by which people are ticketed or brought into the system... of course, but that process by which people are ticketed or brought into the system by just living in their space, I think it would be wise of those systems to look at how they could support those people outside of their four walls, I suppose, and take a more broad look at providing services and paying for the supportive services that are already being provided by the good service providers behind us and in the community, and helping to get those services out to those people, so that we're not seeing a retouching of the criminal justice and the healthcare systems over and over again. So, I think there's a lot of proof of, now, at this point, in Austin's getting the Pay for Success project off the ground, there is a lot of proof of concept around that nationally now. We're now, we've gotten projects off the ground, huge projects off the ground, that show cost-saving measures and community health benefits around those institutions getting involved and paying for housing.
So, if somebody wanted to advocate with respect to this issue, and you want to take a longer view of the prevention and not just dealing with the symptoms, which we've been having to talk a lot about with the ordinance and other stuff since June, really focusing in on the prevention aspects and bringing in the county and central health and state, and not just the city, into the conversation, would produce the most change if we want to end homelessness? Is that...
Yeah, yes. I mean, I would say, if you looked and you were able to talk to each person experiencing homelessness in our community right now, I would almost promise you that 98% plus of those people have touched one of the two systems we're talking about.
Yeah. And I would just suggest that I don't really feel like Pay for Success is enough for them to be engaged in this issue, and I'm not sure it's through our legislative agenda. We don't really have a legislative agenda for the county, but, you know, as we're having conversations with the county over lots of other things, and central health, as we, you know, talk to board members and we're doing that, I think, really stepping up our game and expressing a need for assistance and for the help, I think, would be an important step, because I think all of us agree that we want to get at the roots of the issue, and those systems are not in our control at a large level.
Councilmember, if I may, in response, I would, you know, echo, echo. And I would also say that I think that the county and central health, is central health participating in Pay for Success?
Yes.
Yes, they're in pair.
So, I think part of the reason why is that there is already a built vehicle for them to just insert themselves into. And so, while we're looking at prevention and looking at the systems and those various ways that they can help and support, is what vehicle can we create for them to be inserted into? So, what initiative, what big hairy audacious idea, what goal do we have as a community where we can begin to say, "Okay, this is what our investment is. Here's where we need your investment," which is why I think Pay for Success was kind of that built model, and people just kind of inserted where they felt best that they could be of support. And so, if we can maybe duplicate similar initiatives or goals, I think that's one way we can make sure that those folks are at the table, so that we can all have a shared understanding and a shared goal and a shared vision around this very complex issue. So, thank you for saying that.
I agree with that goal, and it'd be nice for us to be able to plug them in that way, but just as we have a responsibility to govern in this community, so do they. And we shouldn't necessarily have to hand it to them on a platter. They should be at the table, engaging with us on a regular basis to find the solutions. And we will have to do the other way in the absence of that, but I think we could do more together.
Could I just say one, two seconds? Well, this, you did that with Delia a minute ago, just to mention the Recuperative Care Program. So, that's all I'm going to say, is the Recuperative Care Program is something that central health has invested in? So, I don't know if you've had a chance to see that yet.
Okay. Natasha.
Matt, I'd like to, well, everybody, I'd like to say thank you for your time and thank you for the presentation, but something that has been occurring since, like you said, this is highly politically charged, and I'm hesitant to say it, because I don't want people to be more concerned for me than they need to be, but the amount of racial slurs that are being used to describe me currently are really troubling, and I really appreciate that you said the words, that, you know, this is a systemic issue, and that it's an issue that disproportionately affects black and brown people. So, when I say segregation, and racism, and equity, and lack thereof, and white supremacy, I'm not race-baiting. I'm talking about the underlying issues. And I think it's very important that people who don't look like me say those words out loud. That way, I'm not on an island all alone out here. And so, thank you for that. But then, I also have some other questions. Much like my colleague, Councilmember Flanagan, a lot of my questions were answered by way my other colleagues asking. Oh, so, Councilmember Alter touched on it, how to sort of inform how people participate in this process, you know, the altruistic component. I think it would be very helpful, because, you know, Echo's a separate entity from the city. I think it would be helpful for us to have a list of resources, including, you know, journals and data and, you know, information on our site as well, and maybe a list of organizations that people can contribute to. I know, and rightfully so, folks are often hesitant to make financial contributions to organizations. They want to feel like it's a trusted resource. And so, I think maybe offering them, like, given our seal of approval for a list of organizations that they could financially contribute to, might be helpful. Oh, and then, is there a way outside of making a financial contribution to a particular organization? Is there a mechanism that we have to accept philanthropic dollars as a municipality? Do, I guess that's more for ACM?
Sure, absolutely. You know, it's two things. It's my understanding that we actually can do that currently, I believe, but most recently, you may recall that City Council adopted the resolution for us to create a local government corporation?
Right.
And so, we're in the process of creating that LGC, which would be the primary vehicle for receiving those dollars.
Is there a timeline there that people can anticipate being able to utilize that new mechanism?
I'd have to check with staff as to the current progress for that.
Okay. I'd appreciate that. Thank you. Reentry work, you touched on this as well. I think while we're listing organizations that people can contribute to, and, you know, some of the things that folks really need to take into consideration. I appreciate that you pointed it out, Mayor, that, you know, the transition from being incarcerated to reentry, you know, there's a lot of work that needs to happen in that space, and there's a lot of folks who really get caught up in between. And so, I just, I want to be as supportive as possible. I want to make certain that our office is as supportive as possible, as we're making sure to address that need. I'm very, very interested and curious about what the practical application looks like of converting hotel motel to permanent supportive housing. So, just wanted to put that out there, that I'd love to, you know, remain in the loop and see what that looks like and how we can be supportive.
Of course.
Oh, and I can't remember the name of it. There was a PBS special, it was a three-part special. One of the specials, or one of the, in the series, was about housing. I'm going to remember the name of it, and I'm going to recommend it, but I think something that folks can do to sort of educate themselves about the roots of inequity in housing, is really go back to, you know, I mean, even pre-redlining. Really go back to the roots of it. I'd like very much for us to, as a municipality and as organizations that do this work, really talk more about how this all started, so folks don't feel like somehow abruptly we, as a society, landed here, you know? Just really talking about the roots of it all, I think, would be very helpful for policymakers, and just generally speaking, so people feel more informed, would be helpful. And then, lastly, the Pay for Success program. Is there parameters around eligibility, or anybody can participate in the program?
So, yeah, there is an eligible bucket of people experiencing homelessness now, and that has to do with their involvement in the criminal justice system and the healthcare systems together, so that overlap and that piece. And there is a, currently, an eligibility list, I believe, of around 3,000 folks who meet that criteria of eligibility. And of course, the program itself is for 250, so there's an example of yet another gap. But I think the hope is that through the Pay for Success initiative, we'll find, we'll be able to demonstrate outcomes associated with payment triggers and savings triggers that would then allow for those institutions to feel like more comfortable with making a larger investment.
And lastly, along those same lines, this is something that I like to point out to folks often, that you can give people things. You can give me money, you can give me a house, but if I don't understand how money works, then you're not setting me up for success. If I don't understand how to maintain homeownership, then you're not setting me up for success. I just wonder if there are some systems in place built in to sort of help people with that financial literacy and savings and some of the other paths to economic mobility.
Yeah, so, our, and I'll just speak, you know, quickly, because I think the service provider community would be a better group to be able to give you more information about. I'll say for sure, we have service providers that provide vocational support to everyone that comes into their programs, and there is obviously, you know, from a budgeting perspective and financial literacy support there within the case management programs, and then some organizations that actually call out the vocational departments in their organizations that have specific vocational resources associated with them. I think it's been identified through the service provider community as an area that is, obviously, it's important to people, once they get out of their homeless situation and have that resolved with a roof over their head, the supportive services provided through these organizations is paramount to their success moving forward, and the availability of vocational resources and services to that population is crucial and exists here in Austin, and is really well-established.
Thank you.
I want to bring attention to the line you wrote in the report, that every individual that was engaged, as you were talking to people, shared that they wanted housing and services. And I think that's real significant and cuts across some of the memes that we hear in the community, that every person engaged wanted housing and services. We recognize that not everybody wants the shelter, the emergency shelter, temporary, they want a home space. I think it's significant that you said that nationally, we're housing more people from the streets than we are from shelters, and that would be consistent with what we did when we housed the veterans in our community, because we took people directly from the street into homes when we dealt with the veterans. I mention that because the media is now reporting that the governor has announced that on Monday, he is giving flyers to people under bridges and overpasses today, that on Monday, he's going to clear out those people from under overpasses. That's the report. We haven't gotten anything, I think, from the governor at this point, so we don't know any of the details of that or what that means. It's been reported that people are going to be referred to the arch and to front steps and to the Salvation Army, for these people to be able to move to and to give them phone numbers. I'm not going to ask you now, but, Manager, I would like you and your staff to look at this and see proactively what we do. The news today is so optimistic, and so targeted, and so programmatic, and so data-driven to put us on a path to actually end homelessness in this city. I hope what is happening here next week is not just an effort to move people or to hide people, to create an unrealistic expectation that these facilities that we're talking about now and that you have been spending time with are actually beginning to do that. I don't know what happens. The media also reports that the governor may be also involving himself in long-term solutions with faith-based organizations or other people in town, and we need to have more information on that, because if the governor is actually getting involved in helping to provide real housing opportunities for people, then we want to do everything we can to encourage that and to support that. But I, obviously, I have real significant concerns on this meager media report that we've gotten without having heard anything from the governor, so to follow that up. Before we bring people, did you want to say something?
No, I just wanted to conclude. Yeah, but on that time factor.
And, did you want to say something?
I was just, I was just waiting for when NHCD comes up, that's all.
We'll call up the staff, point leads, and now, councilor.
Just on that point, Mayor, I think it's so, it's such an important piece of information that we've housed 450 people in just about two months. And if the governor wants to help, he could, with so many resources, help us double that effort. And certainly, that would have it so that where there were way, way fewer folks under underpasses, if they helped us double our efforts, where we're able to house 900 people in two months instead of 450 people in two months. But my understanding is that it's harder to do that work of housing people when they're getting moved around, and it's hard to follow up with those folks. Do you all want to speak at all to how the ordinance changes that make it legal for you to sleep outside, and some places make it easier for you to actually find folks and help them?
Yeah, so I can, I'll speak to that first. I think for sure, the, there has been, the ordinance changes and people's ability to be in one place and settled in that spot has allowed for the service provider community to better engage with those, with the people experiencing homelessness, and has allowed for them to better engage with the larger homeless response system. One of the challenges, I think, when you're looking at accessing healthcare and primary healthcare, if you're not sure where you're going to sleep that night, or if you're going to be able to stay in the place that you've bedded down for that night, and you have, and you get moved around consistently with no access to transportation, it makes it difficult to keep those types of appointments. I can say anecdotally, with Echo working really hard to provide the hard numbers on this, that for sure, I mean, people are accessing the clinics more. We're seeing a no-show rate drop in those areas, in some of the clinics that I've spoken to, where people are making their appointments more consistently, because their case managers know where to find them, and they can transport them to those appointments. We're finding that people are more easily, I think, we're going to look at, when we start to look at the days to housing number, that's a metric that a lot of systems look at, from referral to that program to getting that person in housing. I think with the ordinance changes, you're going to find that that number of days has shrunk and is smaller, because people can access the resource more easily, and the case managers can follow up with those folks. I don't have that data in front of me, that's anecdotal, but that's my opinion on that.
So, as far as we know, we're getting people into housing faster. People are showing up to their appointments more often. We've housed hundreds of people in just a couple of months, and we're redoubling those efforts to buy even more beds and more rooms to do even more work. And so, I join the mayor and others in saying that if the governor wants to participate in that work, that that would be great, but that if simply what happens is folks that are sleeping and not bothering anybody and aren't in anybody's way under a bridge somewhere just get moved, that person is, doesn't magically disappear. They're going to be in a field somewhere, they're going to be in New York Creek somewhere, they're going to be in someone's neighborhood. They don't, they don't, that doesn't solve homelessness. The work that y'all are doing is the solution to that, and I hope that rather than just threatening folks with arrest or just moving people from here to there, that engages on some of the issues that have been raised today.
Sure. I think it's important to note, so if you took something like what's happening with the Guided Path Pilot Program, and you said that last week, we were going to go and assess everybody out in front of the arch, and there were 99 folks there on a Friday night, and then they were all moved somewhere else on early Friday morning, and then you asked us to continue to engage those folks while they were somewhere else across the city, you can imagine that would be a lot more difficult, and their access to those resources wouldn't be, we wouldn't have access as readily to those resources, and we wouldn't have found and paired 74 out of the 99 folks with resources already, because we wouldn't have been able to find them, so.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's been a really hard challenge, obviously, these last few months, but instead of running from the problem or scaring the problem from one place to another, actually engaging it and finally doing something about it is what you guys have been doing. And I appreciate that work.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I want to thank Lori and Matt. As you know, they're new to the Austin community, but they are not new to the solutions surrounding homelessness. And so we value their expertise and their experience and the time and the work that they've done over a short few months. And so, thank you both. Mayor and Council, with that, I think I tracked three questions. One related to public safety, in particular Austin Police Department, the other related to public health, and then to housing. I think the first two were with regard to an affirmation of whether or not there still does not exist a public health or public safety crisis. And so I'm going to ask representatives from public safety to come up to the front. And then Councilmember Kitchen had a question with regard to housing.
Yeah, so the question, it's more than just the police, I think, although maybe they could answer it. It's, are we seeing needles? Are we seeing, so I think the people that spoke to that before were, were parks and then Austin Public Health. And I want to know if we're seeing a change in condition, if the data indicates that at all. And then if you're bringing up public safety, I would like public safety to speak to aggressive behavior or belligerence. I want to know what we can be doing in our downtown area to make sure that we're enforcing laws against aggressive confrontation, if there's anything else that, you know, within the, the ordinance scheme we have, if there's anything else that we can be doing to, to help public enforcement. Because I'm, I'm seeing that also on social media.
Absolutely.
Could, could we hear from NHCD first? I didn't hear what you said when I was out. Are we going to hear from them first?
No, I think he was calling up, he just called up the police to speak about the public safety issue, that the needles and that kind of stuff.
I know. We have Chief Troy Gay here, and then I think we have Vella Carmen from Austin Public Health, as well as Kim McNeely from Parks and Recreation Department.
Morning, Mayor and Council, or I guess afternoon at this point. Before I answer that one particular question, I did want to say that, that we have been working in partnership to work with our partners to end homelessness. And I think that is a commitment that we have shown in our agency. Also want to reiterate that homelessness in itself is not a crime and we address behaviors. As your question, you mentioned specifically in reference to the ordinance, I believe the ordinance, as it was passed in reference to aggressive confrontation, is clear. We do have laws, our ordinances, as well as those in the penal code that can address those behaviors.
So is, is, is there any additional, what we're hearing anecdotally is that there's an increase of aggressive confrontation happening in downtown in particular. Is there any other resources or anything else that we can bring to bear? Is that true, do you think? Is there anything else we could be doing to help with that?
I believe ane- anecdotally, that information is there. I do believe that we are addressing those calls as we have in the past. I believe that at any time that we, we have a staffing plan in place, I believe the council has addressed that. And we are working on those particular issues. So at this point, I'm sure that as we move forth, we may have additional requests. But at this time, with the new ordinance that just went into effect yesterday, that gave us additional tools, we will evaluate that in, in the near future.
Okay. If you need anything more, let us know. Come back on that issue.
Absolutely.
What about, is there any evidence, any data indicate that, that crime is going up, personal or, or violent crime? Is there more needles? Is there more feces? And that was the, the question.
In relation to, as Chief Manley pointed out, I believe, within the last few weeks, overall violent crime is down in the city. Property crime is up. I don't believe that we can attribute any of the increases or decreases to specifically homelessness. So we will continue to monitor those trends and address them as, as needed.
Okay. What about the other departments? On needles and?
Yeah, Kimberly McNeely, Parks and Recreation.
My staff is reporting that there's been no change from the original statement that I made, that we're not seeing an increase in needle usage. I do want to make one point, though, that we, we seem to make the assumption that the needle usage is for illicit drugs or for something that's negative. But to the point that the group here before said that when there's physical situ, or a physical illness, that some of the individuals are actually using those needles for diabetic, because they're diabetic and for reasons that are medically necessary. So I, I just wanted to make that point. And that's something that our team has recently been able to verify, that it's, it's not just about illicit drugs.
Thank you for making that point.
And I know the last question from last session was with regard to communicable diseases. And Stephanie Hayden was here to talk about that. And it may be that we're just lacking the right person from public health at this time, but we've not heard any increase or anything like that with regard to communicable disease.
Oh, okay. Great.
Good morning or afternoon. Stephanie Hayden, Austin Public Health. There has not been a change since we met a few weeks ago. The data just not, does not support that. And so we are looking into other efforts to, to scale up some of our current efforts and potentially partnering with the community paramedics to do some flu shots and some additional health aid. So those are some things internally that, that we are working on to just increase and provide some additional efforts.
Okay. How are we doing on cleanups and that kind of stuff? And are we seeing additional activity?
Good afternoon. Ken Snipes, Austin Resource Recovery. Good to meet with you all. Cleanup is, is, we've made some changes recently to some of the, some of the practices that have been going on. Things are going well. We haven't noticed an uptick in needles or anything of that nature. We made a specific point to get out and kind of look and surveil the areas to see what we could find. And there wasn't anything significant that we could point to. Recently, the manager's office established several taskings. And one of those taskings is the homeless encampment and cleanup and storage. And I'm going to be heading up that charge for that particular effort. And needles and sharps are one of the focuses for that. So some of the things that we've done is include expanding or increasing the frequency at which we're collecting the bag in, in support of the Violet Bag Program. So as of last Thursday, October 24th, we decided to actually double the frequency of collection for that program. So now the, the bag is going to be collected twice a week. That'll occur on both Tuesdays and Fridays going forward. And also, we're establishing a inspection element. And I think that's really important in this work. I've done this work for, for quite a long time now. And an inspection element is vital to get ahead of some of the, the issues before they become complaints from citizens in the public. And it also allows us to coordinate our activities across the city to better leverage our resources and to create a daily work plan that crews would have as they go out. We've created a few new tools as well. One of those tools includes a, a heat map and also a calendar. And what those two things will do as well is allow us to understand what's happening when. Those items, for example, the heat map is updated based on 311 calls. And so what we would do is use that to, to dispatch support to whatever the areas that, that might be needed. So that pretty much sums up what's happening with cleanup.
I think it might be helpful if, manager, if, if that kind of information could also make it onto the dashboard so that the public can see where cleanup is, has happened and where it's anticipated to be and, and where those kinds of things. So the, the public knows what is happening, assuming that the governor doesn't fence off all our underpasses on Monday.
Mayor, if I may, I had pulled an item from the work session agenda that I think directly relates to what we're talking about with regard to Austin Resource Recovery. So with your permission, I think it'd be time efficient if I just asked the questions I had. This is the item, the interlocal agreement with TechDOT to place trash receptacles in the state right of way.
Item number 25.
Under, overpasses and under bridges. And I wondered if you could just say a few words about which areas would be contemplated and whether, whether that interlocal will be part of the backup for Thursday or whether you're still working. I know we're negotiating, we're authorizing. What we'd be voting on on Thursdays is to negotiate and execute the contract. But if there is a contract, it'd be helpful to see it in the backup and to have some additional information about what locations are going to be covered. As I understood, the, the brief backup information we had, it's, the sites would be at least initially those that are the Violet Bag Program.
That's correct. Councilmember Richard Mendoza, Director of Public Works. So Public Works is engaging with our TechDOT to develop this multi-use agreement, actually, to place these trash containers. And we are using the data from the Violet Bag Pilot. We've identified four locations that we're going to propose to the TechDOT to, to locate these. And they are 183 at Olin Road, 290 and Cameron Road, I-35 and Caesar Chavez, and the 29071 at Pac Saddle Pass area. And so this is normal procedure for placement of, of any type of structures or amenities underneath a controlled access freeway. From, from here, then TechDOT has to take that application and get approval from the Feral Highway Administration. That'll take about 30 days. And we're going to leave the language as such that we can continue to conduct the Violet Bag Program and explore if there's any other sites that are going to be appropriate for the addition of these containers. From what I believe, these containers will greatly facilitate Austin Resource Recovery's ability to service these areas in terms of litter.
Thank you. So it's starting with four, but will the interlocal be flexible enough to add sites?
That is our, that is our plan, is to make it flexible enough to be able to adapt to other sites as the, that need arises.
I'm sorry, as the what?
As the need arises, based on the data from the Violet Bag Program.
And would you mind reminding me how many, how many sites the city took on from TechDOT when, when TechDOT declined to continue?
Certainly. We took on a total of 61 sites throughout the city. And just as a reminder, these were those locations where a city road actually intersects underneath a state-controlled access elevated highway. We took those over this past April, started operations in May. And what we've done recently, we are, based on our experience in adapting to some of the more problematic sites beginning in October, for those locations, I just stated, we're going to be placing those containers. We're going to actually double the contractor cleanups at those areas as well. So you should see a marked difference in the environment for those areas, at least from our perspective, beginning next month. And then the trash containers will follow.
Well, thanks very much. And, and I would rather have seen TechDOT continue to be a participant in those cleanups, but I appreciate the way that our departments are rising to that new challenge and, and providing the resources necessary to make it happen. So thank you.
So Mayor and Council, at this time, I'll call up Rosie Trulove and Rebecca Giallo.
Mayor, Mayor, may I ask, I had one quick question for you.
Okay.
Okay. I, I think I know the answer, but I'll just double check. So I, I did have a, a neighbor ask me where they should report if they have noticed sharpie, sharps and, and needles in a particular area. This is a neighbor that was being helpful by helping to clean up an area, but didn't, didn't want to clean up the needles. So I told them that I thought 311, but I'm now wondering if it was the, should it be the, the homeless hotline that we should have that reported to? Or if you could help me understand where I should tell people to report that to?
I would, I would suggest 311.
Okay.
That would be the method that we would use to collect all of the data coming in for those types of calls.
So that would then go to you and you could, all right, thank you.
Thank you. I'll call up Rosie Trulove and Rebecca Giallo to answer the questions with regard to housing and permanent supportive housing.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I ask a quick question? I noticed in the flyer that was being distributed throughout the city yesterday that people are actually being urged to call 311 rather than the homeless hotline. And I just wanted you to have a moment to address whether that's the protocol we should suggest to people. Or 211, actually, I think it was suggesting 211.
Oh, 211, okay. Sorry about that. You know, one thing with regard to the hotline is we're still fleshing out exactly what we want to use it for. 311, of course, is somewhat, so many of our residents are so familiar with that as like an immediate service need. And of course, they track the service request, et cetera. So let us look at that flyer and see why we might have listed 211 versus 311 or the hotline.
And I may be remembering it wrong. What I didn't, what I noted was that it wasn't the homeless hotline. It was one of those two entities.
Okay.
And so, thank you. And that may be the best plan moving forward. I'm not commenting on it. I just wanted to clarify.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
See what her question is.
Do you want to ask your question?
Yes, I just wanted to ask you guys to speak to, you know, we talked earlier about the need for additional permanent supportive housing. And I know we have some funding available through the Housing Bond, the 250 million Housing Bond. So I just wanted to understand if you all had an approach at this point to accelerating dollars for permanent supportive housing or just how you were going about using those dollars for permanent supportive housing.
So I know we'll bridge our comments together since we may both be thinking on different fronts as to what the Neighborhood Housing and Community Development Department is doing. Rebecca Giallo, deputy. I'm the designated lead for the homelessness interdepartmental group. So the answer is, so it's always helpful to think of the permanent supportive housing issue as a three-pronged approach. Neighborhood housing and community development is the capital. And then obviously, the other two are the rental subsidies served through a sustained approach with vouchers. And then that final piece is services. And so those services are often coming from multiple agencies as well. But Austin Public Health serves as an infusion of the services dollars. And so the, the key component and contribution of the general obligation bonds and also through the Housing Trust Fund is to create as many units as possible that are deeply subsidized. And when we say that, we're talking about units that are subsidized for households that are making for a family of four, 30% and below, which is roughly $28,000 a year and less. And so we are doing that through mechanisms of the general obligation bonds. And then, as you will remember, council had approved an additional one-time funds in the Housing Trust Fund of roughly $7 million. $5 million of those dollars has been infused into our rental housing development assistance program. And those dollars are helping us buy down additional units as well. We envision this data and this crucial data point as being on the dashboard that all of you collectively are indicating will be helpful. We have the units that certainly are in our affordable housing inventory. We actually contract with Echo to track those that are permanent supportive housing because of that triage, the triage need to report out.
But in, in a forward-looking mindset, we are talking with some of our partners about, and, and thinking internally about how we can incentivize creation of more and recognizing that the need is so intense. And so while I don't have anything specific to say, we, it is something that we are actively working on. And we're looking at our evaluation criteria, our scoring criteria through rental housing development assistance to see if there are other ways that we can incentivize the creation of those deeply affordable units.
Okay, thank you. I know that you all are coordinating with a lot of folks with all of your housing. So I appreciate that. Just wanted to make sure that we were, or just wanted to understand how we were aligning what we're doing with the piece that you all work on with the needs that we're identifying through the, through the activities of the Homeless Strategy Office.
Absolutely.
A final comment is, we do concur with the Homelessness Strategy Officer's recommendation to look along the lines of all of the service providers and the dollars being put forward on services. We do believe that looking at that can streamline some of the services dollars so that we can also effectively create PSH, the Permanent Supportive Housing Units, with the, the services dollars component also being looked at as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Natasha?
I found the documentary I was making reference to. And if you guys haven't seen it, it's called Race: The Power
it, it's called Race: The Power of an Illusion. It's a three-part series, um, part one is the difference between us, um, part two is the story we tell, but the one that's really important, and I think would be really impactful, um, during the course of this dialogue, just to give a frame of reference of how we got here as a people, um, as a republic, it's called, uh, The House We Live In, and I'll share that on my Facebook page also, for folks who are looking to check that out.
In just a second, I'm going to call up the other two pulled items, so if somebody's out there, maybe that'll mean we don't have to come back. And then I would just say, let me get you one second, the, I, the, the first part and most of our time today was spent on what it actually takes to end homelessness in our city, and I'm really encouraged that there is a real path, and it's doing things that we know work, because a lot of them we have done here. It's really exciting to hear that we've taken over 400 people off our streets in the last two months, and that's, and that's using the, the resources that were presently available. It's exciting to hear that we have current plans to get several hundred new housing opportunities here in the next month and a half before the, before the year is over, and we need to expand those numbers. This isn't going to, it's not, we're not going to end homelessness overnight, but I'm really encouraged to see that we're on a path where we can actually do that, because Austin, Texas ought to be a city that can stand up and say, "We did not hide those among us without housing, we housed those among us without housing." That said, these point teams in the five categories are really important, because in addition to that long-term work that's being handled, it is, it is crucial that we are demonstrating in an optically visible way the work that we are doing. It's important that people see results in areas we target, like the arch. It's important that people see a list of 99 people that goes down, it's important that people see that, it's, it's important that we're making sure that we don't have more needles or more feces, and when, and as we continue to see that, we need to let the public know. And as we move more and more people off the streets, that's how you have less and less of, of that, and it's the only way to have less and less of that. If all we're doing is moving people around and hiding those people, none of those numbers go down. In fact, we know that overall the numbers will continue to, to, to go up. Now, I want to thank everybody in these teams that are working, I appreciate the weekly reports that we're going to get, I would like to, to get your recommendation on what we do to deal with, uh, what may, what may be happening on Monday, so that we preserve as much of, as we can, of the success and, and good work, and certainly if the governor's office wants to engage on, on, on real solutions, then, then we need to make sure that we embrace any such opportunity that comes our way. Pio?
Mayor, and I also want to, uh, thank, uh, Kimberly from Parks and Rec, bringing up the, the fact that, you know, people that are diabetic have to take injections twice a day, in the morning and one in the afternoon, and even I had to give injections to one of my sister-in-law's dogs when they left me, left him over for a week, I had to give him a shot every morning and one every afternoon, because he also was diabetic, and I had to give him insulin shots. So, you know, don't panic out there if you see needles, although, it, because there are people out there, and, you know, and like, there was mention earlier, people do get sick, they go to the hospital, you know, and they, 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 they get unexpected bills and they have to pay it, and they, they become homeless, but that don't mean that they have to, they can stop taking their insulin shots, so, you know, don't just assume just because you see a needle out there that, that's, it was a drug deal, you know, because they're, they're sick, there are people that have illness, and diabetic people need to take insulin shots twice a, a day.
All right. Okay, yes, you want to close?
I was just going to thank council for their support and their guidance, um, you know, and, and of course, uh, all levels of staff from city management throughout the entire organization, our community service providers as well. It truly is all hands on deck, uh, to tackle the issues surrounding homelessness, but I do believe, Mayor, to your point, that we can effectively end homelessness in Austin. Thank you.
Thank you.